Okay.
Okay.
Acting Mayor White.
Thank you. Welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Regular Meeting of Council, electronically via Zoom, Tuesday, April 20th, nineteen, uh, sorry, 2021, at 4:41, it appears. Call to order, no moment of silence, please. And we'll have the approval of the agenda?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba, here is all that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on April 20th, 2021, beginning at 4:41 PM circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Carried? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Counselor Owen?
Yes, I have, uh, I'm declaring pecuniary interest on any budget topics to deal with water or wastewater, uh, because my son and wife work in the water department. I am not declaring on items that deal with Aqua, because Aqua is an outside contractor, a third party to the town, and does not affect my family's jobs in any way.
Okay, so recorded petitions and delegations this evening? There are none noted? Okay, so item number five is the public meeting of the Town of Kirkland Lake zoning bylaw update. So we're going to move into that meeting now at 4:42. All to order? And the purpose of the meeting?
I can go ahead and take that from you?
Yep. Perfect.
Okay, so the purpose of this meeting is to have the public meeting in regards to our zoning bylaw update. Um, so we, we are required to update our zoning bylaw after our official plan was adopted. Our contract was awarded to, uh, the consultant J.L. Richard. We have been working alongside with J.L. Richards, um, for the past year to do this zoning bylaw update. We had an open house on November 9th, um, and we have the public meeting that was scheduled for today. In regards to the next note where it's the confirmation of notice and appeal process, so the notice of public meeting was posted, um, it was provided as well in this, um, package. And just to make a note about the appeal process, that if a person or public body would otherwise have an ability to appeal the decision of the Town of Kirkland Lake to the local planning appeal tribunal, but the person or public body does not make an oral submission today at the public meeting or written submission to the town before the bylaws pass, that person will not be entitled to appeal the decision of council. So we just wanted to make sure that that was, uh, stated prior. So I'm good, we can, uh?
Yep. Perfect. Uh, item number four, summary of planning report, including correspondence received. And I believe we are welcoming Erin on this? Oh, yep.
So we have Erin and Sarah here from J.L. Richard. Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, you can't? Oh, sorry. It said my microphone was off. Apologies. Uh, so good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, members of the public. My name's Erin, and I'm a planner with J.L. Richards. Um, I also have my colleague Sarah Barrow, who's a senior planner and associate of the firm, is here this evening as well. So as Jenna mentioned, in 2015, the official plan for the Town of Kirkland Lake was approved by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, or MMAH. As per section 26 subsection nine of the Planning Act, the town is required to amend, uh, its zoning bylaw to ensure conformity with the recently approved official plan. So J.L. Richards and Associates Limited, uh, has been working with the Town of Kirkland Lake over the last year, uh, to update the zoning bylaw. As again, as Jenna mentioned, in November, we held a virtual open house with the town to gather input from the public on the draft that was prepared at that time, um, as well as the schedules. The draft that's available on the website, that's also been provided to council and staff, does reflect these comments. Um, there is, again, a draft available on the town's website, I believe. We have the draft bylaw, the schedules. We also have a track changes version that's up, so this shows all of the changes from reformatting to sections that have been deleted, sections that have been added. It's a very comprehensive review of all the changes that have been made. We have provided, uh, council with a memo that does, again, provide some overview of the key changes that were made to the zoning bylaw, so I'm just going to summarize that memo. We've updated the definitions to include new and current uses and terminology. The general provision section was also updated by adding sections to it, such as shipping containers and short-term rentals, recreational vehicles, um, and it was also reformatted. We have reduced the number of residential zones in the Town of Kirkland Lake. This was done by combining the residential medium density, which was the previous R3 zone, with the residential boarding home, which was R3A, um, with residential medium density, which is all now under R2. We've also combined residential high density, which was R4, and residential mixed use, which was R4X, uh, with the high density, I believe is now R3. There, we've also changed the residential mobile home, which was previously R5, to residential mobile home, which is now RMH. We've reduced the number of commercial zones by combining highway commercial, which was C5, with the shopping center commercial zone, and they're both now under C2. We've also reduced the number of industrial zones by removing the industrial commercial zone, combining mineral extraction and mineral industrial, and then also combining mineral disposal with mineral extraction and disposal. Another key change was to recreational vehicles. So in the current draft, what's being proposed is for there to be no recreational vehicle in the residential zone used for habitable purposes. In the rural zone, you are permitted one recreational vehicle for camping purposes, and this can be on a vacant lot. Recreational vehicles are only permitted in residential zones for storage purposes, and they're considered accessory to the primary use in that residential, on that residential lot. We've also limited the number of recreational vehicles on a lot. So what's being proposed is two recreational vehicles to be stored within the interior side yard of a property. There's no limit to the number of recreational vehicles stored in the rear yard. So in your backyard, there's no limit to the number of recreational vehicles there. Um, there's also no limit to the number that is stored inside an accessory structure, like a garage or just a shed. You can have unlimited amount there. Apologies. Um, all recreational vehicles are to be stored, uh, in accordance with the community property standards. Um, and I believe those are the key changes to recreational vehicles. Um, another section is parking on a separate lot, so it's our understanding that there's lots of lots in Kirkland Lake that are small, and parking can be a bit of an issue. So to allow for parking on a vacant lot, um, that does not have, again, a primary structure, it is vacant, that you can have parking. Um, there's, uh, sorry, um, there should be no commercial parking on that lot. There's a ma- maximum, sorry, of one commercial vehicle permitted, um, with the garage for parking purposes, and if this were to occur, the landowners to enter into an agreement with the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake, that the lot with the garage, separate to the main you, shall not be sold with the, or shall be sold with the lot with the primary dwelling or in a budding property within 100 meters. So they would be considered one lot if they're to be sold, but they are separate properties. I'm now going to pass it over to my colleague Sarah, who again provides some more information on the key changes to the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Um, so I'm just going to talk briefly about, um, some of the comments that we received around Nettie Lake and the zoning in that area, um, because that was, uh, we did receive a number of comments. So at the beginning, when this project commenced, uh, last year in 2020, there was, uh, several properties around Nettie Lake that were actually subject to, um, an LPAD hearing, uh, having previously came to this council for a zoning bylaw, for consideration of a zoning bylaw amendment. So at the beginning, when we were undertaking this zoning bylaw update, um, those were kind of outside of the scope because they were subject to that hearing. Um, consequently, while we were in this process, um, towards the end of last year, we understand that that appeal has been withdrawn, um, from LPAD, and therefore, we are addressing those lots now within the scope of this project. So the lands around Nettie Lake are presently zoned rural residential special, uh, rural recreation development, and parks and open space. And these zones permit cottages and parks, um, campgrounds, outdoor recreational uses, and in the open space, uh, just, uh, pretty limited, so cemeteries, conservation projects, golf courses, and some recreational types of facilities and parks. And the official plan around Nettie Lake designates this area as rural, and it does have, um, some specific sections in the official plan which talk about the lake capacity of Nettie Lake. Um, it indicates that a lakeshore capacity assessment must be done, uh, prepared in accordance with the Lakeshore Capacity Handbook, confirming that there is sufficient capacity of the lake to support additional development. Um, in addition, due to the zoning bylaw amendment application that this council had considered, uh, previously, there was a lake capacity study prepared with that application that provided that approval of any new lots for development would not be recommended unless subject to further investigation and under certain conditions. Um, and the study didn't provide any other, any information to support further development on the lake. So as such, uh, we've made some recommendations with regards to Nettie Lake, that, um, anything involving future development, uh, be it permanent, seasonal, or recreational, that involves, um, having a potential impact on the septic loading, um, of around the lake, be reviewed, um, to ensure that it's not going to have an additional impact on the lake. So there's been a change, uh, suggested to the RR-01 zone, the RS-01, to include a provision that indicates no new development, additions to existing development or redevelopment that requires septic approval is permitted. So someone proposing to do any of those things would need to come forward to the town, uh, town with an amendment and justification, saying that the lake is capable of supporting that type of development. Um, there are no changes proposed to the existing lot zoned R01, which is the open space zone around the lake. And, and we have had, uh, just a further comment on that. So we have had some requests about, uh, placing recreational vehicle on vacant lands zoned R1, uh, excuse me, O1, so that open space zone around Nettie Lake, and we have reviewed, um, reviewed that. We would recommend that a recreational, um, vehicle is not a building, so there's very little, little oversight that the town has in terms of the placement of that vehicle on the lot, and then things like, um, dealing with waste properly. Um, and so it's our recommendation that the O1 zone remain and not permit recreational vehicles, uh, to be located on those lots. And I'll pass it back to Erin for a brief comment, I believe, on continuing kind of the report.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time on meeting myself tonight. Um, uh, all of the key changes have been addressed, so I believe now I'm passing it over to, I don't have the agenda in front of me, um, to Jenna, who will speak to the recommendations from Planning Advisory Committee.
Okay, thanks Erin. Thank you Erin and Sarah. Um, so I did meet with our Planning Advisory Committee on April 8th to discuss the, the proposed, uh, changes to the zoning bylaw. The committee is recommending that the bylaw be adopted with a couple of changes. Um, so one of them was in regards to portable shelters. Um, so no provisions for the location of storage shelters be added to the bylaw. Um, and if they are going to be located in the front yard, that it does not pose any hazards for vehicular movement or human health. Um, and the reason for this is that, uh, lot configurations and dwelling locations might hinder the location of a portable shelter. And there's many instances in town, um, where people have the portable shelters on their driveway in the front yard. Um, and the committee also felt that the community standards bylaw would, would apply and, um, be able to enforce any issues in regards to tattered or collapsed portable shelters. So that was their first recommendation. Um, the second one was in regards to recreational vehicles, um, that no provisions be put in place to restrict the amount of recreational vehicles on a property, um, and that they shall be stored, uh, appropriately to conform to the following provisions, that if vehicles are located in the front yard, it shall not pose any hazards, and all recreational vehicles stored shall be in accordance with the community standards bylaw. So again, it was very similar reasons, um, uh, in relation to the portable shelters. So very similar lot configurations, um, where your dwelling is located, and that the community standards bylaw would assist. And then the other recommendation was in regards to fencing. So the, the committee was recommending that a 2.5 meter fence or an eight-foot fence would be permitted for industrial and mining zones, as well as the highway C2 commercial zone. Um, and that was just more so, um, that these, these, uh, properties tend to want higher fences, so we didn't want to have to restrict them by forcing them to go through a minor variance. Um, so the Planning Advisory Committee recommended that. Um, other than that, they, um, staff did review those recommendations, um, and we were in favor of them, except we did feel like portable shelters should still have a two-foot setback from your side and rear yard lines. So that was our, that's from, um, the Planning Advisory Committee. Um, so I'll just read the recommendation, that be it resolved that memorandum number 2021 dev.016m entitled Recommendation from the Planning Advisory Committee, zoning bylaw update be received and that the draft zoning bylaw be amended to include the recommendations put forth by the Planning Advisory Committee on April 8th, specifically as these pertain to portable shelters, inclusive of staff recommendation that portable shelters should have a minimum setback distance of 0.6 meters or two feet from the side and rear yards, recreational vehicles on private property, and fencing in the industrial and mining zones, and the commercial C2 zone, as explained in the report.
Okay, any questions from council?
So Acting Mayor White, just to jump in.
Yeah.
And I do have that moved by Eugene Ivanoff and seconded by Lad Shaba. And, uh, we should go ahead with that or any amendments to that if you'd like, and then we should probably just back up to, um, just accept the planners' report.
Okay. Okay, no. So yes, so go ahead, Lad, yeah?
Yeah, we have a question for the, uh, planners. Actually, two questions. One of them is that during the open house, how many submissions did you, uh, receive from the public? And how, how many of those did you incorporate into, uh, what we have here? That's my first question. And my second question is that, I mean, we live in the north here, and the way of life is totally different. Uh, is this, uh, this zoning bylaw almost compatible, the same thing as a small town, Northern Ontario, to the best of your knowledge? Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So, um, through you, Ms. Mayor, um, I believe, so your first question was with regard, oh my God, I just completely blanked. I'm so sorry. Can you repeat it?
Okay, I, I, you had the public meeting.
Correct.
Now, you did get a lot of feedback from the, the public meetings, uh, meetings or meetings that you had. I just wanted to know, how many of those did you actually incorporate into this, uh, document that we have today? I mean, I want to see the local content, if you did incorporate them into what we have here. And my second question is that, I mean, since we live in the north, uh, going forward, this zoning bylaw, how is that, uh, the same, uh, compatible with similar size of municipalities such as ours, uh, in the north?
Thank you. Uh, so again, through you, Ms. Mayor, um, all of the comments that we've received were provided in the memo. Uh, we do include, um, I believe the date and what their comment was and who it was from. I, off the top of my head, don't have the exact numbers, but any comment that we've received, whether it be from public, from staff, everything's included in our public record, and we ensure that we do, uh, reflect all of those comments, and that they have been addressed. And then with respect to this zoning bylaw being similar to those in Northern Ontario, Sarah and myself are both from Sudbury, we're, uh, northern girls as well, and we've worked with many municipalities in Northern Ontario. Um, I would say that the zoning bylaw is very similar to those in the area. Um, we've done, um, in certain cases where the town did have questions on specific sections and specific items, such as recreational vehicles and shipping containers. Um, we did reflect on other zoning bylaws that we've worked on in the area and others that we've not worked on, but that are in other communities in Northern Ontario. So I would say that this bylaw is fairly similar to others as well. And Sarah, feel free to elaborate.
Okay, perfect. Just before we get too deep into the woods, uh, we should be kind of rewinding and just accepting the memo first, I believe, as Madam Clerk instructed.
Okay, sorry, just to jump back. So moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Casey Owen, be it resolved that mem- the memo from J.L. Richards dated April 16th, 2021, including public comments be received.
All in favor? Carried?
And then would you like to pass the motion, as Jenna has presented, and then we go into actual number seven, or is there more questions about Jenna's presentation?
So does anybody have any question or comments about the motion as written? Okay, so we can accept that, that motion as written that Jenna has read. Madam Clerk, you might have to read it again, please.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that memorandum number 2021 dash dev.016m entitled Recommendations from Planning Advisory Committee, zoning bylaw update be received, and that the draft zoning bylaw be amended to include the recommendations put forth by the Planning Advisory Committee on April 8th, specifically as these, as these pertain to portable shelters, inclusive of staff recommendation that portable shelters should have a minimum setback distance of 0.6 meters, two feet from the side and rear yards, recreational vehicles on private property, and fencing in the industrial and mining zone, and the commercial, commercial C2 zone, as explained in this report.
Okay, all in favor? Carried? Okay, so now we shall continue on. Is there any further questions from, uh, council members? Rick, I believe you had your hand up, go ahead.
Through you, your worship to, uh, Lad, um, on his question about this being a northern type, uh, zoning, um, the, the recommendations that came from the the Planning Act Advisory Committee, or the Planning Advisory Committee, uh, were specific to Kirkland Lake in that we are not a planned community, we are a mining community, we have irregular shaped lots, we have half lots, we have quarter lots, we have, uh, in other words, we're not a subdivision, a planned subdivision like you have down Southern Ontario, and that's why some, that's why those recommendations came forward to accommodate that. And, and the one that was already in there concerning, uh, allowing, uh, parking on a separate, uh, empty lot and a garage on a separate empty lot, again, was specific to Kirkland Lake, but also, I'm sure, to other Northern communities. So just to clarify, Lad, this, this was, it's taken over all principles and then fine-tuned them to Kirkland Lake situation. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other council member have a comment or question? Okay, excellent, moving on. Item number eight, questions and comments from members of the public, and I do believe we have a couple. Madam Clerk, if you can announce, yeah, thank you.
On their, uh, video, if you're from the public, if you have a question, and then that way we can see that you have a question.
Hello?
Michelin?
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Good, welcome.
Well, thank you. Um, good afternoon, Acting Mayor and Council. My name is Michelin Gertay, and I am a resident of Kirkland Lake. Um, as you are aware, I submitted a written request to have my property amended to permit for recreational vehicle. I trust the information outlined in my letter fully explains in details my concerns and legitimate reasons for the request. I would also like to notify council that the Tamisking Health Unit has approved a septic, and the letter is forthcoming. The reason for the septic is to decrease the amount of times that would have to empty the recreational vehicle's holding tank, as well as to simplify the process, and of course, to provide business locally, example, BNR Enviro Services or Max Contracting. Uh, I am all about supporting local business. I am here today to ask you to reconsider the request to amend my property. If a septic deters your decision for approval, we will go ahead, uh, only to use the holding tanks. However, again, I would love to support local business. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Yes, Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I certainly, uh, would almost support somebody who's done their due diligence and like gone out and got, uh, a septic study done by the health unit, and they're doing their diligence, they're willing to support local businesses. So how would we make this work for Michelin?
Did you?
Yes.
Do you want me to respond to that? Sorry. Um, so through the mayor to the counselor. Um, so the property that, uh, Michelin is talking about is zoned O1 right now. So that's open space, um, on Nettie Lake, and not only, so you would need to, to, um, review a zoning bylaw amendment, or sorry, her request would be to change the zoning to either keep it O1, but permit a recreational vehicle to be located on the property. Um, so I believe that's what she has requested. I would just maybe provide the comment, um, similar to what, oh, getting some echo there, uh, provide the comment similar to what we had mentioned during, uh, during our review, that, um, having the septic tank in proximity to Nettie Lake doesn't address the potential lake capacity issues with further, um, potential impacts to the lake. So, um, if this was to go forward, I'd recommend perhaps the holding tank would be a better option because there's less potential for the impact on the lake. Um, and would just note generally, um, again, that the O1 zone being the open space, that, um, the intention was for that to be for kind of open space or recreational, uh, type of uses, as opposed to the placement of a, of a single recreational vehicle, um, on the lot.
Thank you. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that I'm not in favor of a septic tank being put on, eh, on that property, but what I would be in favor of is an in-ground holding tank, as opposed to the holding tanks that come with the trailer. That way, your gray water and your wastewater is contained, you get a local contractor to pump it out and dispose of it in an environmentally acceptable way. Um, my problem with leaving this as open space, if the town owned the property, great, we could develop a park there, we could do what we wanted. Um, but this is private property, and we're charging people taxes for it, and we're saying to them, well, basically, all you can do is go and have a picnic on your property. To me, that doesn't seem fair. I think this is part of a bigger issue about control on the lake. I don't think it's about the environment. And if they put an in-ground holding tank, they would probably only have to get it pumped out once a summer, um, twice at the most. It would have minimal impact on the environment. It would have minimal impact on the environment and the land would be usable. And the people would get a return on the taxes they were paying. So I'm all in favor of of changing the zoning. Not in favor of a septic system, I would. But I I have no problem with an in-ground holding tank and that's quite commonly used. We had one at my cottage, my family cottage just outside of Arilia. There's minimal, no impact from that on on the environment other than a truck coming to pick it up and take it away. So you got some carbon created, but that's it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. So as we understand it, the policy would be to go to a zoning application before the zoning committee, correct Jenna?
Okay, I can let Sarah answer that one actually.
Okay.
So right now the town is in the process of considering the zoning bylaw and the resident, so Michelin has requested that the town consider this through this zoning bylaw update. So that's the request that she's brought forward, both in written format and verbally tonight. So certainly up to council to decide to either adopt the bylaw as presented, or you can consider adopting it with changes made and you could just indicate what those changes are. So that's certainly something that could be done through the adoption process.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Owens?
Okay, I'm going to try. I'm not sure if this is working. Can you hear me through my phone?
Yep.
Okay. So i- in this process, is there the way I understand it, all the the properties that are zone O or green space have all been repurchased by residents that are already owners or property owners on the lake. This would be the only standalone property. Is there is it an option to change the zoning on the property itself? Is that something that can be considered or is that a whole different process?
Yes, go ahead.
Through the mayor to the councillor, the council again is able to make kind of any recommendations that you want with respect to this update and the the adopted bylaw. So as mentioned, I believe the request from the property owner was for to keep the zoning O1 special to allow her to place the recreational vehicle on the property.
But if we were to put it, if we change the zoning altogether to rural, I can't remember what the number is, would that eliminate the whole, this whole issue of having to get a special permission for a septic tank and then you can just follow the proper building codes? Or does that just create a whole new set of problems?
Through the mayor to the councillor, so this is not the placement of a of a building on the property. It's a recreational vehicle, so it's not going to go through a building permit process and have that level of oversight. So with the request being for the placement of a recreational vehicle, we do permit that or we're recommending permitting that on lots that are just that are zoned rural. So certainly if if council would like to rezone that lot to rural, then she would be able to place the recreational vehicle on the lands. I guess the caution is kind of coming back to the the general discussion around Nettie Lake and the concerns about the lake being at capacity that we would probably want to see recommend the additional measure be put in there, the additional clause that we're recommending for the other lots around Nettie Lake that says any development requiring a septic approval would it's not permitted. So in this case, if she's proposing the RV with a holding tank, that would be able to go forward.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, through you to Ms. McNaughton. I know there is a house that was either built or in the process of being built on Nettie Lake this past year. And they would require a septic system for that house. It's a permanent residence, a new permanent residence. Did they have to get a lake quality study done or whatever we're requiring Michelin to get done? Because I'd like to have the same playing rules for everybody on the lake.
Through your worship to Counselor Owen, we we can only issue permits for cottages or seasonal dwellings on Nettie Lake. In regards to the septic, they they wouldn't have had to go through any additional studies at this time because it's not required. But if they did require an upgrade to their septic, we we do require to see proof before a building permit can even be issued that the septic's actually in place. So at this time, if they are constructing a cottage, if they needed an upgrade, they wouldn't have done their done an extra study for it.
But I know this is a permanent residence and it's being built or it has been built during the past year. And I just want to know if they if they had to jump through hoops to get their septic tank in. Because this, from what I've read in these, in the information we were given, the concern is the pressure of adding septic systems to the lake environment. And so irrespective of zoning, that's still the same concern. Now this lot previously had a recreational trailer on it. So I just want to know if they had to jump through the same hoops because I'd like to have the same playing field, the same playing rules for all the participants on Nettie Lake.
Through you, your worship to Counselor Owen. So they they weren't required to do any additional lake capacity stuff, studies at this time because it wasn't required in our zoning bylaw. So that is what they're they're proposing is that any new development that is proposed or any alterations or expansions to buildings that would affect the septic, that they would have to prove that that it can be done. So I, so anybody at this time that has issued or a building permit's been issued for a recreational cottage, if there was already a septic system in place, then it it all goes through the Temiskaming Health Unit for those.
Yes, Counselor Owen?
I I understand Jenna, sorry, Ms. McNaughton. My point is, are we really talking environmental issues here or not? Because we just allowed somebody to do something. But as prior to the zoning law, now we're saying to somebody else, well, you've got to do a lake capacity study. Doesn't seem fair to me. And I and I'm not trying to get all over you, Ms. McNaughton. I'm just trying to make a point that you know, everybody should have to jump through the same hoops. And if the issue is environment, then why? Why wasn't it required before?
Yes. I believe Sarah would like to speak.
Sure. Through the the mayor to the councillor, I could just maybe add on to what what Jenna had provided. So at the time when that building permit would have been issued, these, this update to the zoning bylaw, which is the applicable law when the permit is being reviewed, wasn't in place. So this update is as a result of the town's official plan update, which was completed in 2018. And that included the sections indicating the lakeshore capacity requirements for Nettie Lake. In addition to that, we do have the lakeshore capacity study from from the previous zoning bylaw amendment, the privately initiated one, which talks about, which doesn't recommend further development on the lake. And so with those two kind of pieces of information, that's why we're taking that kind of extra step or recommending that the town take that extra step for further development on the lake. And certainly should, you know, through when further information is provided, that can again be relooked at and and adjustments being made to the bylaw for these provisions. But at the time, at this time, those additional kind of steps are what what's being recommended, taking the cautionary approach to being able to support further development on the lake.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, who's the mover and the seconder on this motion, just in case they wish to change any of the wording?
So underneath consideration of bylaw, I do have it moved by Casey Owens and seconded by Patrick Adams. And I did put together some draft wording just a short conversation. Could you just confirm for me what Ms. Gertey's property is zoned?
Yes, it is zoned O O S, O one?
O one.
It's zoned O one.
Yes, O one. Thank you, everyone.
So Counselor Owens, I'm going to read out what I've amended and see if you are over the call. So I have it to read, be it resolved that staff be directed to present the updated bylaw to council for adoption at a future meeting of council, inclusive of the planning advisory committee recommendations motion passed in this meeting and update Ms. Gertey's property to remain being zoned O1 but to allow or allow to place recreational vehicle on the property with a holding tank.
Yeah. Does that seem right, Patrick? Okay, yeah. If it permits her to use the trailer as or the property is a recreational property with a trailer on there, yeah, I'm okay with this.
I would suggest just making sure that there's no other comments or recommendations included because that's we're we're building on this, but there might be more to it.
Absolutely. Thank you. So does any council member have any further comments or questions? Staff? Consultants? Oh. Sorry?
As a as a member of the public.
Rob, go ahead.
As a member of the public and being familiar with Nettie Lake and that area, there was not supposed to be any permanent houses out there at any time. And the town of Kirkland Lake has deemed the road as seasonal only. And now you're planning on making one particular lot, which is zone 01, have a specific designation. There are other lots out there, not specifically on the shoreline of Nettie Lake that are zoned O1. Should they not also be allowed to have the same provision or allowing Ms. Gertan? You know, if if you're going to try and keep a late play, level playing field for everyone, should not all O1 spaces have this ability to put a recreational vehicle on? Especially, we're we're talking Northern Ontario here. We're not talking downtown Sudbury or anything like that. You're out in the middle of bush. Why, why are you not allowed to do the same as on Crown Land? Take a recreational vehicle out, park it there for whatever length of time, enjoy the surrounding nature. Make sure you clean up after it, either, you know, bring your tank with you or whatever, but why just limit it to this one particular property? The other thing on this is there are several lots on Nettie Lake that are zoned buildable and you're putting more restrictions on those lots than you're allowing this open space to have now. You've already let the cat out of the bag and having permanent houses out there already and the people that have them out there are not being penalized by any means. But you're now going to start to penalize other people who didn't develop, didn't have access to, well, there's new technology out there that now allows you to put a septic bed in and not have an impact on the lake. But you're ruling this out sort of thing. So again, let's level the playing field for everyone. And let's look after the lake, look after the environment.
Thank you, sir. Any responses?
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Owen?
Yeah, Counselor, if I could just get Rob's last name for the record.
Last name is Lang, L A I N G. We spoke last year, you supported our application for a bylaw or for rezoning of the lots out there. Been on the lake for 65 years and have a very good history of it. And we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I do have one comment on this issue. These lands were zoned 01. When they were purchased by all these individuals, these individuals knew what they were purchasing. When they made the purchase, they were well aware of what the recommendations were for those areas. It has gone through this council and it was supposed to go to higher levels of government where the expertise level is quite quite a lot higher than the six, seven of us. So that is my stance on this, that you purchase something knowing what you're getting into, you'll have to go through the process of changing it as well. So there's my two cents on that. Any other council members? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, just I agree with you, Stacy, and as long as they go through the proper channels to have it changed, we don't run into what historically happened. A- as for Mr. Lang's comment about the other O or the zoning that doesn't allow the recreational vehicles, as a councillor, I would be open to any requests on a per lot basis, be considered individually for a zoning amendment to allow what he has suggested. And and I'm taking Michelin's request as the request from an individual property with that zoning. Anyone else that came forward and wanted to make a similar request, I would give the same consideration to. And we know there's a a big history out there and we can't correct it. All we can do is try and be fair going forward. And I think Mr. Lang realizes that that is what the majority of council is trying to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Yeah, Michelin was able to follow the process. She's been involved with this from the beginning. I've always like respect people who have done that. She's done her due diligence and I've already looked at getting a septic tank, but unfortunately that's not going to be an option, but she already did that diligence in order to help protect the land. And as well, she she's she's went through the process. So if anybody else wants to change, the process is available and any member of council can help you, guide you through that process if need be. And either one of our excellent members of staff. So that's the process.
Thank you.
May I make another comment then?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to put in an application. There is a claim off the end of I believe it's Deloitte. No, not Deloitte, it's off of Pine Tree, a little snub out there. It is not on the subdivision in Nettie Lake. It is zone 01. And I'd like to have it included with Michelin's motion that it be allowed to have a recreational vehicle on it. It is a 55 acre claim and it is zone 01. I'm not sure why it was zoned out originally. It was done by the town at a point somewhere between when the subdivision was created and when the town took took over that area out there, but I would like to have it added into this at the time.
Counselor Adams?
So through your worship to Jenna, is that part of our process now? Because I haven't seen anything in writing for this request as I have for Michelin's.
As this is the public meeting, I believe that the request can be made at this time. So that that would be part of the process, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, Sarah, please go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what Jenna said through the mayor to the councillor that we're still kind of in the process of updating the zoning bylaw. So this is the the final stage, the public meeting for input. So anyone is welcome to come forward, either written or verbally throughout the process, or in fact at tonight's meeting and can make the verbal request. And again, it's up to council to decide in terms of which requests you would like to include, or you can also decide if you would like other ones to be perhaps go through the site-specific zoning bylaw amendment and consider them at a separate date.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay, so we should be wrapping up the conversation on this if all council members agree. Yes, okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, can you reread the motion, please?
With councillor Owens being the mover, was there any further amendments that you would like me to add?
Nope. Just include the last request from Mr. Lang. I can move forward with that.
So a question for Mr. Lang, just for the purposes of the motion, I just I don't really understand what the property is. Like, is there an address or is there something more definitive I can like point it out of or? Or just can I just say?
I can send you the roll number tomorrow for the piece of property. It is it is a a claim and it is off the end of Pine Tree Road adjacent to the subdivision on Nettie Lake. There's no official address, but I can give you a 400 digit roll number code if you'd like that.
I think I think I've got some wording here that'll cover us. Let's see. Okay, so I have moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that staff be directed to present the updated bylaw to council for adoption at a future meeting of council, inclusive of the planning advisory committee recommendations motion passed in this meeting and to update Ms. Gertain's property as well as Mr. Lang's property specified in the public meeting to remain being zoned O one, but allow to place recreational vehicles on the property with a holding tank.
All in favor? Carrie? I would like to thank both Jenna and our, oh, yes, go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry, your worship, and I don't mean to interrupt, but we should probably check and see if there's any other members of the public that have comments. We also, through Jenna, we had received a written comment yesterday, I believe. And Jenna, was that circulated to council?
I I sent it to the clerk. I think we were going to wait for today. I'm not sure if Ms. Camita's on the line. If she wanted to address that. Did you want me to just read out the letter or?
So we could probably explain if you would like. Sorry. So there was a request or received another O one zone property on Nettie Lake. And the request was, so I believe the property owners are, so they're requesting a review of considering lifting the building restrictions in order to permit the construction of a storage building to store seasonal recreational equipment as well as provide dry storage of firewood used for our residents. And Erin, I know you looked into the property a little bit. You said they own an abutting property as well. Yes. So this would be the case where there's an existing property owned RR dash zero one and a property owned zoned O one under the same ownership and they're requesting for that O one to permit storage affiliated with their adjacently adjacent owned property.
Yes, councillor Owen?
I could go along with that as long as the change is made clear that that no residential structure is to be built on that property. As long as that is is made very clear, I could agree to that.
Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, I too would agree with that. I think if you own a piece of property next to your house and you want to put up a storage shed, why not? Absolutely.
Councillor Owens? As the mover?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. No, just one question though. So if, because there is a history out there, people building as they see fit, is there a mechanism in place? Or can we add a mechanism in place that if someone decides to use these properties and do something they're not supposed to as and build a cottage or a house or an extension to a building, that these properties should be removed? Where I the if I can compare to a property where I grew up in Quebec, the same type of property was built with a beautiful house on it and the municipality forced them to tear the house down because it was not zoned or it was too close to the water and they they were out of compliance and had to remove the building. Is this something that we can do?
Through through your worship to the councillor. So, yes, the municipality has certain abilities under the Planning Act in terms of zoning compliance. So it's typically indicating to the property owner that they're not in compliance with the bylaw, and then the municipality can take actions through the courts to get the property property to be or the issue to be resolved. If there's issues of septic systems in particular, then that could be something as well through the health unit that can be pursued. Or if it's a public health and safety measure, there are sometimes avenues under the building code. So there are a few different avenues that the municipality could take.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, through you, anything larger than 100 square feet does not require a building permit, 10 by 10?
Through you, your worship. Yes, that is correct. It's 108 square feet.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments, questions or additions? Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, I just I'd like to have a clarification as to the size of the garage that we're talking about. People can build a, you know, five car garage or something like that. And also I've seen instances where people build a garage today and then turn around and put it upstairs with a two bedroom later on down the road. So how do we try to control something like that? So how far can you go with your garage? One, you know, one car garage, two garages or as many garages as you want. Shouldn't we be able to at least confine how much people can, how much space that you'd be used to build for those things?
Through the mayor to the councillor, this wasn't specified in the request. So the request was basically what I read out. It just says a storage, construction of a storage building storing seasonal recreational equipment, which, as you rightly pointed out, could be quite large and to provide dry storage of firewood. So at this point, we don't have any further details of the size of the structure. That's certainly something that could be considered through through this proposed amendment to set a limit to the size. Or or it could be brought back to the proponent to bring forward as a site-specific zoning bylaw amendment at a later date with further details.
May I make a comment on this? We've just gone through the process of Ms. Gertain's property about not allowing any building on her property because it is zoned as parkland and you're talking about a person who's put a permanent house on Nettie Lake who now wants to park recreational vehicles, which have possibility of having gas and oil leak into the surrounding ground on open space parkland. You're now gone from an open space to allowing building on it now. I think we're starting to get a little carried away here as to where we're going, because there's no controls on a on a shed as to what leaks in the way of gas or other things like that. You know, and we're also looking at open space. And the council was quite adamant last year about not allowing buildings on open space.
Somebody is has something going on in the background. Please mute if that's you.
So at the moment, we do have a member that says it just says iPhone on the can that person say who they are and if they have a comment?
Hello? Can anybody hear me?
Sorry, please identify yourself. Good evening. Could you please identify yourself? First and last name?
Yes. Yes, this is Ann Camita speaking. In regards to our request, the building would be strictly an accessory building with no accommodation for living at all. It would be for the storage such as our own personal snowmobiles, a boat, and our ATVs. It wouldn't be extended to anything outside our own personal belongings.
Thank you for that clarification. Any comments or questions? Any further additions? Oh, councillor Shaba?
Yeah, I guess the question to the member of the public is what size is she thinking about? What size of this storage building? What is the size of it?
We haven't quite decided, but but it wouldn't be, you know, excessive in size as what was possibly suggested. It wouldn't be you know, a four or five bay garage. It would be like we just haven't decided exactly what the size is, but it wouldn't be outrageous.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Owen?
Outrageous to one person is not outrageous to another. So it's a little hard for me to quantify what should be and should not be allowed. Since I don't have an objection, a big objection to putting a building on that property, but since since there's no concrete plan as to the size of the building, the location of the building or anything else, I would suggest that this is a case that should go after the zoning bylaw has been passed for a zoning amendment. At which time, the owner of the property will have time to come up with their plans, the location on the building, and then as a council, we can make an informed decision on what is what we believe is right or wrong for that property in the Nettie Lake community. So that would be my suggestion in this specific case, because we don't have enough details to say yes or no, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
I understand that. I recognize that it would be larger than a 10 by 10 structure. It would require a building permit of which we would, of course, obtain. And, you know, like I said, that's all I can provide at this time. We had heard of the zoning bylaw amendment and therefore we had put in the request to have the building restriction lifted. However, at this point in time, we have not decided exactly how large the structure would be. But it would it would be a, all I could say is that it would be within reason. And I understand what's one person's reasonability is not necessarily in others.
Thank you for that. I do personally, I do agree with councillor Owen that at this time, because the specifics are just not there, that perhaps that decision should be left to an amendment later on.
Okay. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other councillor comments, questions, additions? Are we ready to read the motion for a third, fourth, fifth, final time?
Again, we'll just confirm that there's no other public wanting to comment. Is there any further comment for the consultants to make note of?
I don't have any further comments.
I have a comment. I have two properties on Nettie. And so if this is the case that we could put a trailer with a holding tank, I have a family member who who was also given the property to that we gave our son the property as well to put his trailer on. So if we're doing this today, could we add that one as well then? So I've denied.
Sorry, pardon me. Excuse me, order. Thank you. I believe it is our CAO that is trying to speak currently. Correct? No? Okay, so who was the male voice speaking? Okay, go ahead, Ann. Thank you.
That was Ann. That was Michelin. I was talking.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I own I own, sorry, I own two properties on Nettie. And we have given one to our son to utilize. So we were just wondering if we're going to do this today, then is can we add that property as well just for the purpose of putting a trailer on there? Not not for construction, just a trailer.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship, to Ms. McNaughton. What is, do you know what the other property is zoned? Because we may not have to do anything if it's depending on the zoning.
That property is well, it is one of those O one zones.
Okay. Well, I would be in favor of just adding that property as well for a trailer and a holding tank, not a septic system, unless a late capacity study is completed. Did I get that right, Ms. McNaughton?
Perfect. Okay, any further comments, questions, additions, staff? Council? Consultants? Members of the public? Madam Clerk, can we have a reading of the motion?
Councillor Owens, are you in favor of adding the second property of Ms. Gertain? Just amending this one moment. Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that staff be directed to present the updated bylaw to council for adoption at a future meeting of council, inclusive of the planning advisory committee recommendations motion passed in this meeting. Update Ms. Gertain's two noted properties as well as Mr. Lang's property specified in the public meeting to remain being zoned O one, but allow to place recreational vehicle on the property with a holding tank. And that Ms. Camita's property request will have to apply for an amendment after the passing of the bylaw for more information to consider.
All in favor? Carrie? Thank you, everyone. We will move to item number 10, adjournment.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that council adjourn the April 20th, 2021 public meeting zoning bylaw update.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much to our consultants for joining us this evening. We appreciate your hard work on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you to the members of the public as well for joining us for that public and open meeting. We now are going to go back into our regular meeting agenda with the acceptance of minutes. We now are going to go back into our regular meeting agenda with the acceptance of minutes.
Acting Mayor White, if I could just a moment to go through my participant list and just make sure that, uh, all the members of the public have left.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, acceptance of minutes.
And through you, Acting Mayor White, to council, just to advise you of the long list of committee meeting minutes. Um, so because we've been doing everything electronically, we haven't been able to have the chair and the secretary deciding the minutes. So our regular process is we don't bring it to council until it's been signed so that you know that it's been passed. But we didn't want to keep not passing these through you, so we've now just noted, uh, which days they're passed, and then we'll say passed by council on this date, and then now we can start uploading them to the website. So this is why we have such a backlog, but we're just going to move forward during that electronic.
Okay, perfect. I do have a couple of questions on the minutes we received. Uh, the first one is the Economic Development Committee of October 21st to November 25th. Um, there was motions passed to repurpose of billboards. Um, I was just wondering if any of members or members of staff could answer, did these discussions include the promotion of the museum on these repurposed billboards?
Through you, your worship to council, the billboard, uh, sorry, the museum, um, is responsible for its own billboards that had, uh, ones posted in the past, as well as it has Todd signage. The billboards that were under discussion at the Economic Development Committee were for promotion of Kirkland Lake as a community, as a whole.
Thank you, sir. My second question, um, at the MAC meeting dated December 16th, there was a motion passed that staff be directed to bring forth a recommendation to council from the museum, uh, museum advisory committee to include funds in the museum's operating budget for a dedicated promotional signage for the museum. I was just wondering if the director could speak to that and let us know if that actually made it into the museum's proposed budget.
Thank you very much. Through you to council, yes, that has been included in the museum's operating budget for this year.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Proposed.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that council approved the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of council held April 6th, 2021. That council accepts the minutes of the following committee meetings. Minutes of the Committee of Adjustment Meeting held July 7th, 2020. Minutes of the Museum Advisory Committee Meeting held September 23rd, 2020. Minutes of the Committee of Adjustment Meeting held September 29th, 2020. Minutes of the Youth Council Committee Meeting held October 8th, 2020. Minutes of the Economic Development Committee Meeting held October 21st, 2020. Minutes of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Meeting held November 4th, 2020. Minutes of the Committee of Adjustment Meeting held November 24th, 2020. Minutes of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Meeting held November 24th, 2020. Minutes of the Economic Development Committee Meeting held November 25th, 2020. Minutes of the Police Service Board Meeting held December 9th, 2020. Minutes of the Museum Advisory Committee Meeting held December 16th, 2020. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Library Board Meeting held January 28th, 2021. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board Meeting held February 18th, 2021.
Excellent. All in favor? Carried. Item number seven, reports of municipal officers and communications, 7.1, proposed 2020 capital budget. Acting CAO Dawn Stedholm.
Well, you have, uh, the capital budget has been forwarded to you. I have each one of my, uh, uh, directors here or managers to talk to you in regards to the capital budget. And I'll turn it over to you in regards to that. Is there a particular one you want to deal with first? I would prefer that we go with, uh, um, the works budget first, works and waterworks, which would be, um, uh, Michelin, uh, Michelin, Michelle, that would talk about it.
Uh, your worship?
Yes, sir.
I would request that waterworks be separated from roads so that I can, uh, take part on the road side of that discussion, as I do not have a culinary interest on the roadside, and I don't have to keep muting and unmuting and disappearing. Thank you.
I believe that's reasonable. Thank you. Any comments or questions from council members?
And I'll just tell you guys, you know, this is for you guys to make your comments on, and to make suggestions on removing that item from that list. Or on, you know, with that list in its entirety or whatever. This is your time to have an impact in regards to capital projects that you as a council are going to approve and move forward with. Now, this isn't our last kick of the cat, but it probably, it may be for our, our capital projects. You can always bring it back when we're doing operations, but it certainly is a, um, a, a step in the right direction for us.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Adams.
Yeah, this is, uh, the third year of doing this for me. Uh, I'm certainly probably one that makes the enemies by slashing things and trying to make up reasons. But just as a reminder to councilors and members of the public, we are going through a pandemic right now. Uh, you have a mine that's closed, other businesses that are closed, not making any money. And we are looking at, uh, funding many things from the tax levy, which has the direct impact on people's day-to-day livings and such. So when we decide what we're going to be cutting, just remember in the back of your mind that people aren't working, businesses are closed. And when we had our, uh, consultants come in and tell us how we should do our, uh, tax levies year over year, they recommended moderate increases. If you look at the 2021 Consumer Price Index, that's 2% for this year, and we have capital projects far exceeding that funded by the tax levy. So just a reminder that businesses are closed, and now we get need to make the decision as well based on 1,400 people. Why does the save the museum requiring an initial investment of $616,000 to be able to keep their roof going? So we got some decisions and some things to cut.
Thank you for that. Any other council member? Thank you, Counselor Owens.
Um, in the proposed, uh, equipment purchases at the bottom of your list, you've got tobacco, the plow truck. Um, what do we have here that is need versus, like, absolute need versus want? Like, I don't want to go through every item and nitpick at stuff, but it, like, what is, or even in the list as a, as a whole, what is a need versus a want? What can we do without?
Michelle, are you there?
Oh, there you are. Yes, I'm here. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, through you to council, um, basically, our equipment is aging, uh, and, uh, we're seeing lots of costs in repairs. The tobacco was, uh, there's over three, three years' term. One backhoe is in the $50,000 of repairs, and the other is falling closely to the, in the 40s. Uh, the thing is, uh, it has one great, one backhoe has 14,000 hours, the other one is in the 13,000 hours. So it's basically, I think it's, uh, life expectancy. Uh, so longer you keep it, it's gonna cost you more. And at the end of the day, you won't get any returns for that, uh, investment, I guess you could say. Um, right now, if you, if you do move forward in purchasing a backhoe or two backhoes, uh, you, you could, uh, add the trade-in value of your backhoe, which is not a bad thing, but if you do lose, let's say, an engine, it would cost you in the range of 30,000 to replace the engine. And that's basically could be your value of your trading. Even the back, the, the plow truck, um, it's a 2007, it has 234,000 kilometers on it. So it, it is, it has served the town well. It probably still can serve the town well, but we're having difficulties, um, getting parts for, for this piece of equipment. Um, had to replace the power steering, which, uh, was a, they've, the suppliers have looked around and basically they found the last one, that's what they said to us, right? So, so it is the getting difficult to get parts because it's aging.
In, while you're on the plow truck, i- in one of the reports last year, I think, it was suggested that the town of Kirkland Lake, because we're more of an urban setting, that we should be moving away from plow trucks and going to graders, so we purchased a second new-to-us grader. Uh, so we've got two graders now. Does that alleviate the need to have this plow truck, or is that not an option?
Well, it is part of the, the fleet management plan that, uh, Mr. Labelle had, uh, put in place before he left. Um, and this truck still remains part of our fleet.
Okay.
That was not being removed at all.
Okay, sorry, so I saw Counselor Owen hand up first, and Counselor Shaba, then Counselor Owen, uh, Ivanoff.
Yeah. Thank you, your worship. Uh, Michelle, like, you, uh, I, I appreciate the fact that you're still here at budget time. You, you must be, uh, uh, like punishment, I guess. Uh, and this is a standard question. I'm sure we ask it every year. Uh, did we look into the advantage disadvantages of leasing as opposed to purchasing, um? What, what I'm thinking about right now is that we're in a pinch. And I'm not saying that equipment doesn't need replaced. I, I ha- I have to accept the fact that 13,000 and 14,000 hours is a lot of hours. Um, if I equate it to my pontoon boat, yeah, that would be like 100 years. So, um, one way of, uh, avoiding, uh, a huge capital outlay at one time is, is leasing, and I'm just wondering if we looked into that at all.
We haven't gone to that avenue yet. It is an option, or sometimes, uh, like in the plow truck, sometimes you can purchase a demo, demo plow truck. Serve the same purpose, and sometimes you, you get fair savings. I've done that in the past, and, uh, it, that also is an option.
I, I would appreciate it if, if we could look into leasing. I know there's disadvantages to leasing as well. But in terms of our current financial position, and also, if you could pick up a demo plow truck and save us a few thousand dollars, I mean, that, uh, that would be an excellent, uh, excellent situation. I'm assuming that purchasing a used plow truck is not something that you would recommend, because plowing is rather a brutal, uh, process for a truck. You, you wouldn't know what you're getting.
That's, that's the thing, but I did purchase, uh, two demos, uh, in the past, one at 10,000 kilometers, which is not a bad deal. And, uh, one that actually was just a demo to, to, around the circuit to, to, for sales, which had, uh, 1,000 kilometers, which gave us some good savings there.
Yeah, if you could look into that, I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the, uh, plow truck, if you're on a leasing pro- program, uh, pick up with, but I, I'm not sure about that in the plows.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shaba.
Oh, yeah, uh, Rick, you, uh, you asked my questions. Two of them. Uh, the, uh, the other thing I can add to this is buying, uh, new ones, what sort of, uh, warranty, uh, do they have? Uh, for municipalities, will they be, I don't know, five years, 10 years or whatnot, because I hate to see us buying new ones, and all of a sudden, uh, we don't have enough warranty, uh, to cover that. So, and again, I also agree with, uh, uh, Rick, that we should, uh, look for, uh, the pricing for least, maybe least to own. Uh, that we, that we cannot really, uh, keep the, uh, the, the cost down, which is the cost of, uh, buying a new one. So, can you, uh, look into the, what is the warranty status of new ones, and also, uh, again, the question is the least to own? If it's not leased out, but least to own a deal. Thank you.
A standard warranty would be basically a, a one-year deal for most, because it's commercial, it's taking a lot of reviews, like you said. So I believe that it is standard in the industry, it's one year.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Ivanoff.
Yeah, uh, Michelle, uh, way back, I think, uh, when Mr. Labelle was here, I think there were, the talk was to get three graders, not two. Uh, I think he compared us to Cap Scasing, which was using, and that was, I believe, his hometown. And, uh, the graders were a lot more effective and efficient than the, uh, the plow trucks. And when I see a plow truck on for 300,000, that's about the price of the grader, I believe, uh, maybe, uh, and, and maybe more than a, a secondhand grader, but, uh, I'm not sure. I, I mean, you'd be more familiar with that than I would.
Yeah, a plow truck, uh, as you've seen, we put 300,000, but, uh, I would think, I believe that it would be a maximum of 275. Uh, we're, we're, we just put a buffer just to what it were, the unknowns. But there would be, I'm sure, it would be less than 300,000.
Thank you. Counselor Adams.
So, uh, part of our strategic plan as well has identified the need to budget for large tickets, especially since it's been mentioned that the, uh, end of life cycle is coming near, that we wouldn't be putting up this kind of money on the tax levy right away. We would actually see a plan year over year to try and pay for that if we know it's coming to an end. So I'm not sure how this goes, but I would like the motion to not fund tobacco's from the tax levy at 350,000. And maybe for the next couple of years, we try and find ways to put that 50,000 away, or 70, but 350 for the tax levy, in my own opinion, is not happening for this budget right now.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, yes, sorry, and Counselor Adams, go ahead.
So I'm not sure how we're going to do this. Are we going now line by line, or like each item? Because, uh, I can go on to the plow truck now. So the truck, uh, we have identified in our strategic plan as well that we would be going to, uh, look at contracting those specific routes for the specific need of not having to do these kind of replacements at a cost of 300,000. Yes, we were certainly lucky this year that, uh, the snow wasn't as bad as, uh, the year before, where certainly, uh, capital purchases for snow removal was top of the list. But for a plow truck, for the tax levy for this year, is not happening, in, in my opinion. Uh, Mr. Rick Ripperby, if you able to explain if we've made any progress on looking at contracted snow routes, as identified in the plan?
We initially did, uh, some research and, uh, but it hasn't, we haven't carried on, just, we had so many things happening out here at the present time.
Okay. Uh, at this point then, uh, for myself, I'm not sure how we will motion and second this, but I would not like to see us funding 300,000 off of the tax levy for a plow truck.
Thank you. Next issue. Yes, Counselor Adams.
Hey, hi, me again. So, uh, SCADA system for 250,000 to be funded by the tax levy. Um, I thought there was like, that cost had come down. Why is this back on our list for 250?
That, that was the, the cost savings, uh, that we, it was in the 300 to 400,000 dollar range initially. Um, we, it, it's actually a fair price. Uh, we, we had to make adjustments, uh, last year, and it was approved. Uh, there was, uh, a few items that was missed, and we made sure that, uh, we had a fully functional There was a few items that was missed and we made sure that we had a fully functional program.
Okay. I do, if we're going through the list, the next list on there is a crosswalk, $145,000. Could we expand on that, please, a little bit?
So we're proposing to do crosswalks similar to the Second Street and Churchill Drive. And it can be done in time, you know, it probably can seek some funding if, if any available. This would basically improve the safety aspect at the crosswalks. And it would remove the crossing guards over time. So there'd be a saving in one way, then it would be fully functional in place with the crosswalks and you eliminate the human errors.
So the crosswalk at Churchill that is currently covered by garbage bags and is not functioning, that crosswalk?
Yes, we had a dysfunctional controller. So it has been placed. We're basically ready to put it back online. Presently, we're putting well, guys, make sure that it dies a bit more than what it's used to be. If you use the same process that the mist, the misting shores has used. And we're, we have to bring to council also removing those two parking spots.
Okay, perfect. Further question, yes, Counselor Owen?
That price, is that for per crosswalk? The 145,000, I don't, I don't have all the sheets, unfortunately. I think a few, but is that per crosswalk?
No, it is for six crosswalks.
Oh, okay, okay. I feel much better now. I was starting to sweat there for a while.
Basically, the one that we've put in place, we're about the $16,000 range. And we anticipate a few more, one more invoice. So we're assuming that's going to be a maximum of $20,000 to put in place. It's a fair, fair deal.
Good, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Ivanoff.
But you said, Michelle, there might be funding elsewhere for things like that?
Yeah, we would have to look at out there what's available to us. Maybe you could implement one at a time if you like.
But should this be in our budget if you can find funding elsewhere, I mean, outside of the tax levy?
Yeah, right now it's just a proposal, then yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Counselor Adams.
Yeah, just going back to the SCADA system for the 250. Our Water Works Capital Projects, 1.2 million. Is that something that cannot be funded any part from that fund?
The 250 was specifically for SCADA.
And does that not cover water or wastewater for that plant then?
No, it's a standalone project. All the expenditures at the water plant wastewater treatment plant, we need to ensure that the plant operates efficiently. Can make sure that we have parts available. Right now, we're, we're not running at 100% at the wastewater treatment plant. We have an issue with component. We are actually bringing a press to dewater the waste. The plant going at this point. It seems like it takes a month to get the one part. That part is part of the capital project and looking at next year, we should have an extra on standby in case of failure.
That's good.
Counselor Adams.
Yep. So garbage refurb, $46,000 tax levy. What is this project and why does it need to happen?
That's actually the garage, Public Works Garage was the
Sorry.
Which garage would that be?
Public Works. We had an inspection of the garage that was a concern last year and so we had to remove all the equipment out in case of roof failure.
Yeah.
So basically, I'm basing myself on the engineer's report. There's probably some, the engineering part of it, there's just that is $30,000. But we might be able to just do phase one versus phase two of that part or combine them together and look, we will have to get some budget numbers, bring three consultants at the table and provide us with better pricing. But that was, that was provided by one consultant at this point.
Favorite Counselor Owen?
Through your worship to Michelle, the garage rehab, is that the structural work or that doesn't include making sure the roof doesn't leak? Because I know there's two issues. One is structural, which we did the study on to find out that we could salvage the garage and the other is that the roof needs replaced. So are they two separate things then?
There is no actually roof replacement at this time. It was investigated back many years ago and they wanted to put another roof to it and the existing frame cannot take additional loading. That was a separate item back in the day. So there was concern that, because we didn't have a final report in place when this investigation took place. So that's why we brought the engineers in last fall.
Okay, thank you.
Identified, we have to address a few items structurally. And that's, that's a must on this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Adams.
So for the garbage refurb, just looking at available reserves, we have infrastructure capital for 476. I think this was like the garage and that was like shut down, right? It was unsafe, so we have to get this done because the infrastructure of the building is an integral part of it. So I would recommend funding that part from the infrastructure capital. Like, I'm not sure about this process. Are we just saying what we would like to do for the next meeting or? Let me
Yes.
That would be very helpful. For the next meeting.
Well, the thing is, is that you're supposed to go through this one item at a time and indicate, do you support it or don't you? Everybody around the table says yes or no. Move on to the next item, yes or no? Third item, yes or no? And go through, I think Michelle probably has 40 items on there. So it's going to be a long process. It's not going to be simple. But that's what you need to do. And then when you get the fire, same thing. When you get the community services, same thing. So this is going to take you a process tonight. Going to take you a good hour and a half probably to go through this. But that's what you need to do as a council in regards to this. Now, I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're losing Michelle in a week and a half. Yes, and we're all nodding our head. So you know what that means? When you lose Michelle, you don't have anybody over there to steer the projects moving forward. I'm just giving you a heads up on that. So, you know, when we lose Michelle, it's going to take a minimum of six weeks to replace Michelle, if not longer than that. And that's going to take you through till, you know, probably the end of June, first part of July. And then you got to go out for, for bits on these projects and so on and so forth. So once again, good luck in trying to get this all done or all completed by this construction year. You know, you got to keep that in the back of your mind as a counselor, that these are challenges you're going to face delivering the works project that you won't have in delivering the capital projects in the other departments. So and that's why I put Michelle on first because it's going to take you guys some direction and some organization in moving things forward. And so you kind of need to have one of you guys running the roots and then, and it should be Stacy as the coach, as the chair. And then saying, okay, are we all in favor of that? Yes, you know? And then move on to the next item, because else you're going to be here till midnight.
Okay, fair deal. If that's the way we want to do it, let's start at the top of the page with Works Department Laptop Computer with GCIS Mapping. That's the first page, is it not?
Yep, it is. 10,000, something like that.
Yeah. 2020 CF Strategic Initiatives Equipment 10,000.
That was basically, and that was basically an item that was brought last year and was not completed because we were waiting on the WSCS consulting reporting. And that's right back on the table.
Okay, are we in favor of this as a council or no? Yes, Counselor Adams?
Well, where's the funding from these? It just says strategic initiatives and it has nothing because I said before, if it says tax levy, I'm on it. I can skip through the rest.
Yeah, Counselor Owen?
Yeah, Michelle mentioned that this was from last year. So was money set aside from last year to be used for this?
That's what the CF stands for.
Anything with CF has been previously approved?
From last year's budget. From last year's budget, yes. Even though I wasn't here, I know that.
Okay, so we're not so going out and raising 10,000 in tax levy to pay for this because the money's already there, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm on numbers, Don, at home, I'm sorry.
So in this case, let's skip one, two, three, four. Let's go down to Town of Kirkland Lake Municipal Service West End Expansion. That's coming out of government funding and reserve fund. Are we fine with this item? Everyone, perfect. Next item, Water
Where's the balance of the money coming from?
Wait, wait. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Eugene.
Yeah, where's the balance of the money coming from? I see 88.5 coming out of reserves. There's another 400,000 that's got to come from somewhere else.
We're looking at having a venture with KL Gold on this project.
Okay. So they're supplying some of the coin, correct?
Well, if they were, they want to be a partner and that just needs to be finalized.
So have we approached Kirkland Lake Gold that they're definitely going to be a funder on this? No, we haven't. But that is something we need to do.
Okay, next item, Water Wastewater Works Storm Water and Sanitary Sewer Tunnel Study Repair and Replacement Other. 71947 Partnership with KL Gold. Yes, Counselor Adams?
I just have to declare a conflict of interest for these things, for anything pertaining to being funded by KLG. So I'm just going to turn my camera, camera off for anything about KLG.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Owen?
So that's 71947. Is that the total price or is that what we have to put in?
This was a number that was carried for several years now. The project has never taken off. But right now, we're actually discussing a goal to alter approaches. This is a there's a safety factor in this project.
Absolutely. So if this has been carried forward from year to year, is this funds already set aside?
No.
Okay, Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, no, I mean, I have a concern because this is something that we've been putting off for my entire term. And I know that the concern is if that collapses in there, we could lose sewage and wastewater for most of Kirkland Lake. So that has to be looked after, at least studied. The study has to be done and we have to figure out what's going on inside that tunnel, which, and I, you know what? This, I think, is a priority study.
There was, there were some attempts done in 2019 and the camera not going there because of different levels and so on.
What is the status of discussion with KL Gold regarding this item?
It was, we had some brief discussions. We're trying to determine free and see if there's a best approach to this project. And those previous staff were actually discussing with the CDO because they got a similar situation. So that might be another avenue to approach again.
Any more comments on this item? Are we moving forward with this item? Everybody in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, we have consensus on the item. Next item, Water Wastewater Works TKL Sewage Treatment Plant Aqua 161,000 Reserve Fund Wastewater. It's coming out of reserve. Everybody fine?
Oh, no.
If we have
Counselor Owen, sorry lad.
No problem.
I'd like to know what it's for. It just says sewage treatment plant, water wastewater works, like that plant's less than 10 years old. So what are we spending 161,000 on?
We have issues with the plant at this point. There is actually one item that, actually, there's two items that just came up to the service. We have to replace the centrifuge bowl assembly. And that's the 55,000 dollars just there. And now we have to repair the wall of the digester. There's punctures into the wall. So we, that's another 18,000 dollars there. Because there's, you know, chemicals and so on into that plant. So some of the components of the equipment is taking a beating. It runs to a new 47, so there's wear and tear.
Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, my question is that do we have more than that amount in the reserve? Fun? Oh, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we're just waiting.
Answer, yes.
Sorry.
Yes, Counselor Adams?
Yes.
We're, yes.
The money was, the reserves were all provided to us in the document. So wastewater has about 1.1 million dollars. So that was what's been provided to us ahead of this meeting.
Thank you for the confirmation. Yes, Counselor Owen?
Before everybody gets excited, don't forget we've got that line coming in from Swastika that that we're going to have to dip into that, or as far as I can tell, we'll have to dip into that reserve pretty quickly. So we shouldn't think that we're sitting pretty there. It's going to be gone very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. So have we come to consensus on the sewage treatment plant coming out of wastewater reserves? Lad Shaba?
I'm good.
Okay, sorry. Moving on to the next one, Water Wastewater Works Town of Kirkland Lake Wastewater Lift Stations Aqua 24,000. No explanation of where it's coming from?
Actually, this item may be removed altogether. It might be duplicated. And you will see down below the 161, just before that, we just discussed, there's a duplication of that same amount. So I need to
Okay. Perfect. No further discussion needed on that one then. And next, Water Wastewater Works Swastika WP CP Decommissioning and Sewer System Connection to Kirkland Lake WWTP 8,175,000 with no further explanation.
That's what Rick just talked about.
Yep. Okay, Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that's what I just referred to. That's the sewage line that's coming in. I understand that parts of it are going to run below the current water line that's running in from, or running out to Swastika. We do have, as shown there, we've got considerable government funding. And then it's got 2,575 from the tax levy and I assume that that we will probably eat up a good portion of the reserve rather than hit taxpayers. that we will probably eat up a good portion of the reserve um rather than hit taxpayers with an increase to pay that. Or we may look at borrowing. That's another option as well. But um, that's a huge project that we inherited, had been approved and, and uh and uh was in the works, early works from when we were elected, and it's one that we have to see through. So there's no options on that. We have to pay for it one way or another. But I will say they have looked at, at ways along the way of, of, of trying to decrease the cost. Now, like I mentioned earlier, uh portions of it will run below the water line. There's regulations uh concerning how close they can be together. And sewage obviously has to be below the water in case there's a breakage. So hopefully they can find some more savings as they continue the work.
If you recall, last year we had the, the tender out and we had two submissions, was one nine point four million, yet on nine point eight. Yeah. And the engineer's estimate was a seven million mark.
Yeah.
You know, above and beyond that uh our budget. Right now, we're actually looking at re-tendering, but we uh we have to redesign some of the stuff uh looking at maybe keeping the Swastika Treatment Plant for the time being. And it wouldn't be a treatment plant. It would be more a pump station uh so we can save perhaps one to one point five million.
Yes, CAO, Don Stedholm.
So you see in there that government funding is five point six, tax levy is two point five. Okay, this is a water project. We're not allowed to use tax levy for anything in regards to
Water.
Project. So the tax levy of two point five seven five is not in the proper column. It uh, we'll have to look at some other form of funding this if you guys want to proceed ahead, like through OCIF or whatever, to try to come up with some of that two point five seven five, and then the rest of it's going to have to be done through some type of uh funding uh through the government or whatever it may be, but it's not, or through the bank, I should say. But it's not coming through tax levy. So I just want to make that clear to everybody and make sure that they have that understanding.
Thank you. Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, but it's gonna be part of the water levy, right, which is a tax, so it's gonna come on the water bill instead.
Well, it's gonna come on the water bill, but you can't, it's not a tax levy. Tax levy means it's coming out of your property taxes. And it's not your property taxes on this instance.
But water rates are gonna go up, yeah.
Um, I have a question.
Go ahead, lad.
Um, since I'm not really, I wasn't here, I'm not privy to uh this government funding. So my questions to our director is that uh this funding here is the, coming from both levels of government? Provincial and federal government or just one level of government?
I, I believe, if I'm not taking that back to my documents, but I believe it is two levels.
Two, the two levels, right?
Right.
So there's nowhere for us to go. All right, okay.
Any further comments on this line item? Okay, moving next, we did.
Are we approving that item then? To go ahead?
Do we have consensus on that? Yes, we do.
Hey, I'm just telling you that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All the manpower to pay for this, but anyways, go ahead.
We do not have the manpower, pardon me, Don?
I'm just saying, I just don't know. You've approved pretty well every project we've done so far. And I'm just stating that Michelle is leading us in a matter of less than ten days. And so I have to go out and try to find somebody to replace Michelle, which will be very hard to do. They won't be in probably till the first of July at the earliest. And then we have to go out and get quotes on these. And then we have to have them, you know, uh, start working on these projects. We gotta have people in place to supervise this and so on and so forth. I'm just saying, it's gonna be very hard for us to move ahead with all these projects. If you say move ahead on that one, that's fine. I just want to make sure that what I told you is clear and that that is what we're looking at. I'm only here till the end of June. You probably heard me say that before. But the thing is, is that, you know, you guys are gonna be the ones left behind to ensure that these projects proceed ahead according to plan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councillor Owens?
So, Don, if we decide to defer this to two thousand twenty-two, what happens with the government funding?
We have government funding on that project till next year. So twenty twenty-two, we have uh funding for that project until that time.
I may.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
This project will be monitored by Aqua Engineering. There's a project manager. And Stan Tech is the designer and contract administrator on this project. So that's covered.
Thank you. Councillor Adams?
Yeah, just sort of the concern that we've approved so many projects and we might not even be able to complete them all has me concerned about the rest of the line items. So how about, it's almost recommended, recommended that staff knowing the best, instead of giving us millions of dollars in a tax levy to cut, which is not realistic to the strategic, uh, strategic plan that we purchased, uh, that says you should have reasonable tax rate increases. This goes totally against that. So how about staff tells us what projects they can do in a reasonable time? And then we can make decisions and help them with that. Because if we've approved this much and another project is going to kill everything, then what projects can we do?
Yes, CAO, Don Stedholm.
Well, I agree with Pat on this particular issue because it is my department heads are going to try to get you to approve everything that they're putting out in front of you. And I tried to get a few of them to cut back some areas and have cut back in some areas and other managers are saying, no, 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 I want to bring it to them. I let them know that we're working hard and this is what we're doing and so on and so forth. So, you know, so that's where I'm stuck in regards to doing these type of issues. They want to bring certain issues to you guys, which, you know, I'm sitting here saying, okay, go ahead, do it. And then other ones, I'm saying, you know, can we cut here? And they've gone, oh, yeah, don't worry about that. We'll cut here and so on and so forth. So that's where we're at. Uh, Councillor Adams, I tend to agree with you, but uh unfortunately that's what we're facing today is what you're facing.
Thank you for that, Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, you know what? It's almost like, you know, we want to look at a reasonable tax increase. So somebody says we increase taxes two percent. And then we come back and, and, and what, how does this reflect in a two percent tax increase? Where, you know, when you, we look at this and we try to put it all into some sort of a picture, we come back with a twelve or fifteen percent tax increase, instead we're all gonna go, hey, that's ridiculous. We can't do it. So we it, it's hard for us to fathom how this stuff fits in with a potentially two percent tax increase. That's where I'm sitting and it's like, I look at this and it, it looks like, well, we, you know, some of the stuff we have to do, like I think that tunnel project's been put off for way too long, but I, it's hard for us to fathom putting three hundred thousand into a snowplow, another three hundred and fifty into a couple of backhoes, spending two and a half million dollars on a, uh, you know, on the Swastika's decommissioning. Uh, it just, for me, you know, if, if we start approving all of this and then we find out it's gonna be a ten percent tax increase, we're all gonna say, hey, that can't happen. We're gonna have to go back and, and relook at this and uh, you know, I, I, I just wish we had more of a, a full picture of what was happening as opposed to this minute little piece at a time thing. Just my opinion.
Councillor Adams?
So, yeah, we've all read the strategic plan because we needed that and like that's what this, this is what it said, two percent. So I get it. Uh, last year's budget proposals were way well better, no offense. There was descriptions as to why we needed it and based on priorities. That was all laid out before us. This is just one line item saying what it is and then a number attached to it. Now we've got to ask questions for every single one. So department heads, we already have quite a few million dollars being carried over because we couldn't do those projects. Now we're just gonna add more of a levy to be carried over into the year after. That's, 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 that's not good in my books. I can finish this wastewater because uh this is his last week, but for the rest, I would almost recommend that staff come back with a more reasonable tax raise that they know that they can complete the job with and something reasonable within the Consumer Price Index. That's where I'm at.
Okay, Councillor Owen?
Yeah, uh, you know, for years I sat in uh, in the council chambers and reported on council and every, every mayor uh, and every CAO said, oh, this is a bare bones budget. And council never passed them. And they went back and guess what? Magically, the bare bones got bearer on the second time. And sometimes they went back a third time. Why don't we just sit here and tell them they can have a two percent increase? That's it. End of story. Figure out what your must haves are. Because how do I know? I don't operate the backhoe. So how do I know if it really has to be completed? I know when I worked, if, if the company came to me and said, Rick, what's the shape of the company camera? Well, I'd tell them it needed replaced. But unfortunately, I worked for a company that was too smart to do that. You go to any worker and you ask them how their equipment is, and if they know there's one out there that's better or newer, more efficient, they're gonna say the equipment they got right now is crap. So I think our best approach is just to throw this all back and say directors, two percent increase, hard line. That's what you gotta do. And then if there's some must haves, absolute, that are gonna affect the operation of the town, then we can consider them separate. But that's my recommendation because how are we supposed to know? We're not involved in the day-to-day operations. We don't know what's broken and what needs replaced.
Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, are there any surpluses from last year? Uh, we don't know that either. You know, was the entire budget spent? Was there money that wasn't spent? Is there things that, uh, you know, that, you know, was there a million bucks sitting in the kitty somewhere that, that we don't know about? Uh, I'd like to have a full picture of where we are.
Yes, Don Stedholm, Acting CAO.
Um, you mentioned you don't have verbiage in all this. Uh, I'll take full credit for that. I do have full verbiage here. I'm still new to the system that you guys are using with these sheets. Took me a while before I even figured out what, where you got these sheets and what these sheets are for. But certainly, you know, Michelle has provided them all to me in regards to it, yes, so I whatever forty sheets here from Michelle explaining each one of these projects and how important it is to the organization and blah, 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 blah. But, you know, the bottom line is, you know, if you're saying that our entire budget is going to be a two percent increase overall in regards to what we were paying last year, then you guys as council have to notify the staff that that is the maximum you'll go. And then we know what we have to come back to you with. Because really at the moment, I'm doing everything the way we used to do it fourteen years ago here at the municipality, which would is we bring out the capital, have you guys say yes or no, bring the operating budget, say yes or no. And then we'd be looking at what type of increase are we looking at? You guys, or at least a couple of you guys indicated you have a percentage increase, which I have no issues with. I can work around no matter which way you want to go. But the scenario is, is that, you know, we as staff need to know what direction are you going in and what direction, what final direction do you want to look at? Because otherwise, like after we're finished this, then we go to fire, then we go to admin, then we go to parks and rec, and then we go to library, and then we go community services. So we could be here, like I said, for another couple of hours. But if that, that's where we're at, and if that's where you want to go, then you need to direct staff. That's where you want to go.
Um, before uh Councillor Owen speaks, this council um has gone through several different processes of budgeting. The first year we were on, we had fourteen finance committee meetings that resulted in three hundred and twenty-eight pages of documentation. You want to talk about line by line? We went dime for dime that first year. Um, and then so every year that we do this, this process, it seems to change a little bit, so please have some patience with us as well. Um, we are not accustomed to any specific way to do this budget. Um, we are all here and recognize we're all trying to do our very best with this situation. Councillor Owens, please go ahead.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't have a problem with said a, a figure at two percent for, which is a maximum uh allowable increase, but two percent might not mean the same thing in public works as it does. And if I'm looking at the, the second page of uh, of demands for, let's say, TPR or even fire services. So is it fair to assume that two, like all uh department heads will be able to work within that two percent? Or is there some give or take with, between each department?
So to respond to that, this may be an exercise um in our strategic plan of no longer acting as silos that perhaps all department heads should be working together as per our strategic plan uh to come up with a solution to this. I myself would like to see a range of two to four percent, um, because that will give staff a little bit more leeway for the items that are actually dire, like that storm sewer drain, um, that to us is more than important because it sounds very like an environmental nightmare, but in reality, because they're the ones that actually are doing. The inspections may not be as scary as it sounds. So personally, I would like to see a motion for two to four percent.
Councillor, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Uh, Councillor Adams?
Oh, I.
Oh, sorry. Okay, lad, please go ahead first.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree with you because uh the way it's going now is gonna take us a long time. But uh to get this thing completed, so I think we should keep a range in mind. Uh, how you uh distribute that range, I guess it's up to the division to figure out how much, what they need. So when I look at this, uh, the, what we're doing now with three point seven uh, three point seven eight nine million dollars tax levy. So I, I'm saying, scratching my ass, so what percentage would that be for the total? Is this, is this the, maybe, maybe this is more than two percent. I don't even know. Maybe it's less than two percent. So maybe what we ask our directors to do, if you uh, maybe in future, they can tell us what a percentage of that, what that would be. Uh, maybe this will be one percent of that levy, then we know that we're only playing with whatever percentage is left. But right now, this total tax levy here does not really make sense until we look at it with a bigger picture in terms of how much is it? And I like to see the whole picture too, all the divisions. So we give you all of this. This is gonna cost two to four percent in tax levy overall. Then we can talk about reducing things that we don't really need now, that could be deferred to later on. And then we can attend to things that we do really have to attend to right away. But the way it is now, you know, we can approve all of this and find out like someone said, it could be twenty percent tax levy. Then we're back to square one again. So I think we need a better uh system of trying to tell us, we're coming here with X dollars amount of money and that would translate into X percentage of tax levy overall. Then we can work from there, but I don't see that in this report.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. I do apologize if I'm not getting people in the um, manner in which they raise their hand. I'm seeing my screen right to left and this is the way my eyes go, like you read. So, so I do apologize to that. So uh, Councillor Owens is on the top and then uh Councillor Adams will be next. Go ahead, Rick.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah, I, I have no problem with the two to four range. And I definitely like the idea of the directors working together because we need to address the real priorities of the town. And giving each department, say, four percent doesn't necessarily. doesn't necessarily address the pressing issues to serve our ratepayers. Because maybe one department needs six percent. And another department only needs two percent. And the only way that can be done effectively, and is being suggested in our in our strategic plan, is if the directors get together and work it out. We as counselors, I think, have a very difficult situation because we know there's wish list items there. But none of us work in that in those fields. So it's very difficult for us to somehow figure out which are the wish lists and which are the reality.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Adams.
Yeah, so uh, for every one hundred thousand dollars is a one percent levy increase. That is what that math is. So I will go back to, I know the two to four range is out there, but I will go back to my consumer price index of one point eight. So make it a range of one point five. Just to have my wiggle river.
Okay, so do we have, uh, Madam Clerk, who is the um first and second are on this motion?
I do have it moved by Patrick Adams and seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Um, so Counselor Adams, would you like it to read one point five to four percent?
Absolutely.
So we have an amended motion that reads as moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty one dash C A O dash zero zero six F entitled proposed twenty twenty one capital budget be received? And that staff be directed to present only necessary items with a range of one point five to four percent overall tax levy increase.
All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Onto the next. That was, uh, that's unanimous, by the way. Uh, item seven point two, M I S update and request, Don Stedholm, interim C A O.
Okay, M I S update and request. So this is in regards to your information technology. Uh, and uh, so what I'm looking to do is I'm looking at presently, we have a contract with K D H. Uh, K D H has been initially really good to deal with. Uh, however, nowadays, uh, K D H uh only provides us, if you want to call it lip service per se. You know, they're not interested in helping us as much as they used to uh and moving things along. Uh, so you know, so we've been looking at, how do we get past that? I do know that, you know, presently, we do have one person on staff, which has been here for whatever, five, six weeks or whatever, which is Dan. And uh, you know, and Dan obviously is very knowledgeable. However, he can't do everything he needs to do for all our buildings and for all our areas uh by himself. He's going to need an assistant to help him and and uh and to move this process forward. Uh, so uh, my recommendation there is pretty straightforward, just indicating that uh, we hire an M I S coordinator assistant to provide assistance to the M S I coordinator. And also that the town remove the present I T contract to K D H and run the system internally as of July thirty first nineteen ninety one. Nineteen ninety one, I'm in the wrong year.
Entry.
One.
You and I both done.
Anyways, uh, you know, that's the process that I'm putting forward. I have talked to the hospital in regards to this. The hospital is all supportive of this. They think that it's it's a, it's time for us to be out there on our own, looking after our own I T stuff. And I think that uh, you know, where we're at with our organization and moving things forward, that that is where we need to be. Now, I will mention though, that, you know, we have put on a two to four per one point five to four percent increase in there. We have to purchase a little bit of I T to go along with this uh sale. So anyways, that will all come down when we meet next time in regards to the capital budget, which will be in two weeks' time. And uh, but anyways, we'll all approach that when I can approach that, but right at the moment, I'm looking at getting permission because this is a new employee. And I know if I come to you guys, I got, you know, for new employees, that's what I'm doing here. And then cutting the contract with K D H as of July thirty first.
Comments or questions, Counselor Owen, then Counselor Ivanoff?
Okay, I don't want any of the counselors to have a heart attack, so I'm giving you prior warning. I think this is a great idea. Yes, I'm in favor of increasing that department with a new employee. Um, I think as uh Acting C A O Stedholm pointed out, that the uh partnership we had with the hospital worked, served the town very well for many years. But um, as we've seen in recent times, we've had some problems, and it's taken a long time to get them sorted out. And I think it's time that we become the captains of our own ship and make the investment we have to, provide the staff we have to, and it is, it would be far too much for one person. So I fully support uh Acting uh C A O Stedholm's suggestion.
Excellent. Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, no, I like the uh, I like the idea. I just like to get uh, do you have an estimate, Mr. Stedholm, as to what it's going to cost us to buy equipment? Uh, and replace the contract with uh K D H?
Well, to replace the contract K D H, there'll be no cost to us per se. We'll be saving uh, you know, right at the moment, I think we're paying them forty five thousand dollars a year or whatever. It's going to cost us, uh, we purchased everything fairly new, about two hundred and forty thousand for all the equipment, which is fairly good. That's for five different areas of equipment that we need. The last thing I forgot to mention when I was talking, and that's why I have Megan here who puts little whispers in my ears, is that uh Bonnie has applied for a uh con uh contract with the government that we'll be able to pay for the hiring of this person for at least one year. So you know, so what we cut from uh K D H, you know, I was looking, well, that will hire my employee for a year, but no, we have uh funding that's out there that should be able to hire the this employee that we need. So overall, you know, it's going to look like it's going to uh, we save the amount from K D H plus buying the new equipment somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the most to um to uh keep this going in uh, in uh M I S.
Excellent. Any further comments or questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you read the motion?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash C A O dash zero zero seven entitled M I F update and request be received? That staff be directed to hire an M I F coordinator assistant to provide assistance to the M I F coordinator in setting up, servicing and providing backup to I T. And that the town remove the present I T contract with K D H and run the system internally as of July thirty first twenty twenty one.
All in favor? Carried. Item number seven point three, Service Delivery Review, Museum of Northern History, Bonnie Sakreiter, Director of Community Services. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, both that. Thanks for acting Mayor White through you to council. Um, just to briefly review some of the highlights of the report that you have in front of you. Um, service delivery reviews were approved by council last June for a number of different areas. And it wasn't that long after that, actually, that Counselor White, Counselor Ivanoff, and Mayor Kylie were able to do a delegation to A M O. And this delegation basically was to speak with the parliamentary assistant, as well as to Minister McLeod, and ask that at this point, the trust do assume full responsibility for the assets and operations at the Sir Harry Oaks Museum. So that was the initial step that council um with staff assistants took. Unfortunately, the response that we had received at that time was that um, the ministry is arms length from the Ontario Heritage Trust, and that that would have to be taken up with the trust themselves. So at that point, um, in the Service Delivery Review, W S C S did attempt to make contact with the trust to determine what some next steps and some options could be. They weren't successful um by the time they did their December first presentation to council and as of their March final presentation that we were able to share with you. So based on their findings, um, the the final report was given to council, and there was, there was definitely discussion on next steps. I think what happens is we have a very non-traditional relationship here. So typically, when you have a landlord and a tenant, the landlord takes care of the building and the tenant takes care of the operations. And it's very different, and I think that's causing a lot of a struggle. So that means that the taxpayers in Kirkland Lake are responsible for a very high level of dollars in order to maintain a heritage building. And I think that's where the struggle comes in. I believe at this point, what we're looking for, and obviously council uh looking for your input, I believe what we're looking for is a conversation with the trust to determine what are options that the town of Kirkland Lake may have. It is not sustainable in the current form in which the town must pay operations and capital improvements. It's a very high expense for something that we do not own. At any time, um, it is not our building, and it hasn't been for the last forty years. We are in a lease agreement. We are in year forty of a sixty year lease agreement. And if we look at the agreement, um, we would have an option to renew for another forty after that if we did so desire, which I wouldn't recommend at this time. So I think at this point, what we're looking for, or what what I think we want to discuss is moving forward to have discussions with the trust to find out are there options? We don't know yet if there's options. We've had lots of input as to what we could or should do, and uh, at this point, I open it up for discussion, or if I may answer any questions.
So just sorry, I'm just going to ask one quick question. That building has been registered as a heritage building. So with your understanding of what that means, does that mean that that building is protected?
Protected
Protected from, it will not be bulldozed, it will not be torn down, um, it will stay standing.
Absolutely. It is a heritage building. It would have to be the trust that made that decision. It's got nothing to do with what we want. And I don't believe from my understanding that they would ever want to get rid of their building.
Thank you so much for that, uh, Counselor Ivanoff.
Yeah, Ms. Sakreiter, it's exactly what I think we should have is a conversation with the Heritage, Ontario Heritage Trust, find out exactly what our options are. Uh, you're right, it is not sustainable under the present uh agreement that we have with them. Uh, the uh, the costs of running our current museum are not sustainable. I mean, you, are we just can't afford it. It's uh, two percent of our budget of our tax levy uh every year. Uh, the potential liability in addition to that is another fourteen percent or in that vicinity. Uh, so we, you know, we certainly can't continue on. So I think having the conversation is certainly the first step. Thank you very much.
Any further comments or questions, Counselor Adams?
Uh, through your worship to uh, Ms. Bonnie, Bonnie, did we receive any emails about the museum?
Absolutely. So the clerk was the recipient of a number of emails um that were sent to her. So those were all circulated to council as well as to myself, and I I think from my perspective, we read them all, and we take all of that information into consideration when we make decisions. Not sure if you have any other comment on that?
Oh, absolutely. And I think I saw the petitions up to thirteen hundred dollars to uh, I mean thirteen hundred participants to uh save the museum. And cost is not a price. While the cost, if you want to keep this going for next year, is going to be six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to fix that roof. And uh, even though we have fire code contraventions, is it even safe for people to be there? Like, that was done in twenty twenty. And like since then, I think I've seen kids sleeping in that building, which has contraventions to the fire code, like this. Right? They had those slumber parties over there. This is something that needs to be done.
No, it wasn't. Sorry, Counselor Adams, it wasn't a slumber party with children. It was actually, they they took their little teddy bears and their teddy bears had to sleep over. The kids didn't sleep over. Yeah. Yeah, but I would uh be interested in hearing, uh, we do have Rob Adair with us. Um, could he give further information about those violations that were found in the building?
I don't have that information right in front of me, but I can look and uh get back to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just, I just want to clarify some things. Um, this is not a pleasant process for council. I want to make that quite clear to people. That is a beautiful, wonderful historic building. Everybody can agree on that. I love that building. But I'm also someone who's had to work all his life to make ends meet. And there are a lot of people like me in the town of Kirkland Lake. A lot of people that live paycheck to paycheck. And a lot of people where tax increases really affect their quality of life. And I understand that. And I have to think about that when I'm considering uh, questions like the sustainability of the museum. I have to think about it in terms of not whether it's a beautiful historic building, but I have to think about it in terms of its overall effect on the residents of Kirkland Lake. Now, I consider myself an artist as well. My art is photography. Um, in fact, many years ago, I had a show at the museum, and it was very successful. So I I admire the local arts community. And as a reporter for thirty five years, I promoted the heck out of local musicians, local artists, every chance I got. So but again, now I'm in the role as a counselor. And I have to look at the costs to all residents. So there's one other thing I want to make clear to everybody out there that because it's a heritage building, we can't go out and hire a local contractor to put on a new roof. It's simply not allowed. We have to hire one that our landlord approves of. And we have to bring them up probably from Toronto or Kingston or Oshwa or Windsor, which just further adds to the costs. Um, and that's something else that we as counselors have have to take into consideration. Does anybody sitting on council want to move the museum? No. Do we? Do we want to close down the museum? No. But we have to make hard decisions. And we said, at least I said, when I ran for election, that I would make hard decisions. And unless someone can come up with a sus, with the money to make that museum sustainable, so it's not a burden on the ratepayers of Kirkland Lake, I can't see the situation staying the same. But yes, I agree with Ms. Sakreiter and Eugene that we we need to have a discussion with our landlord to see if there are options. So I'm just asking people, don't panic right now. Don't panic right now. But remember, it's not just your club, it's not the arts and culture that we're at. We have to look after everybody. And that's what we'll make our decision based on. And hopefully, we can come up with some sort of answer that will make people happy. But we're certainly not, we we've already discussed various options of what could happen with the collection. We're not looking at destroying or forgetting the town's history. That is not our desire. Thank you.
I'm assuming I can, okay, so just first, I I just want to to clarify something like I'm a history major. I studied history at Laurentian University. And I watched very saddened last week the department in which I studied get completely gutted because of restructuring. And I watched very saddened last week, the department in which I studied get completely gutted because of restructuring. Uh, a university enjoyed spending time to got, got it on so many different levels because of mismanagement and errors from the past. And you know what? That's what we have to live with. So I love history. I studied history of Northern Ontario workforce movement of popular, uh, workers throughout Northern Ontario. That being said, we have to base our decision on facts. Fear mongering, lying and bullying won't get you nowhere. We have to face the facts. This is where we're at. Uh, I don't want to see this museum closed. I think it's an integral part of our community. It's an important part of our community. But we have to think of the taxpayers of the residents that still choose to live in Kirkland Lake. Not everybody can afford a tax increase. So that being said, Madam Clerk, can we modify this resolution just not to change the out, necessarily the outcome, but just the wording in the way where it won't scare people as much and to say, oh, we are closing the museum. You're not closing the museum. We want to see what our options are. We want, when you have a discussion with norm, and I've had several discussions in the past three days, face-to-face discussions or phone calls, and when you explain to the individuals where we're at, how stuck we are, that we need to find a solution. We need to find a way out of this mess we're in and see what options we are. So can we just say something like, just contact Ontario Heritage Trust and see what options we have that are available to the town of Kirkland Lake to help us out in this jam we're stuck in? End of rant. Which I must say, I toned down. I, I rewrote this speech about forty times since yesterday, since I ran back to town after dropping my truck off at the garage there. And the other versions were probably more direct, but I think this is more suited.
Thank you, councillor Owen. Any further comments?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I, I think that um, it's been well said uh, by my fellow councillors here uh, about where we are with respect to the museum and the look at page three or four, it tells the whole story uh, about the finances uh, all the way back to two thousand seven or so. Now, what I'd really like to add to this motion, I don't know who the mover is, uh, is that since we're seeking options from the Ontario Heritage Trust, well, let's seek options as well from some of these people in the community as to how they plan on fixing the problems. Let's look at their options. Let's put their option on the table and then scrutinize those options. I'd like to see that everybody have all these good ideas about a lot of this. Maybe there will be something there that the staff have not thought about, which I doubt, but I like to see other options too. Uh, in addition to the options coming from Ontario Heritage Trust, which is our landlord. Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Shaba, are you talking about options to fund the capital liabilities that we're looking at, that one point four million? Is that what you're looking for?
That's correct. That's correct.
So you're looking at
Yeah.
wanting the public to come up with funding options for one point four million dollars?
Well, give them all these stats that we're working with now. And so this is our dilemma right now. And we're looking for options from Ontario, uh, Ontario Heritage Trust. So we're in this dilemma. What option do you have?
Okay, no, I was just clarifying of what you were seeking from members of the public. Count.
I don't think we have all the answers to the questions at this table. So maybe there's some people that will have more answers than we ever thought about. So I like to, I like to hear them officially with, you know, with numbers that may help us in our deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Shaba, councillor Ivanoff, please continue.
I think that's a separate uh, issue. I think uh, funding museum or trying to find some way of funding it or trying to find other options, whether you go fifty fifty draw or something else. All those options are in emails we've received, we've read, we've seen. Those are great. Uh, I think this uh, particular time, we need to have a conversation with the Heritage Trust Foundation. Uh, and I, you know what, I, the motion, I, when you talk about divesting, I think it gets attention. I think when you start diluting it with a whole bunch of other things, you're going to have a conversation that's going to last four or five years and we're never going to get this thing settled. I think we have to be very plain with them. Here's what we are looking at. Uh, this will be where we're going. If we don't have uh, you know, and I'm sure that will stimulate a conversation, but I, you know, as, as Casey has said, I, I understand uh, you know, having a conversation and giving them a whole bunch of different options is, but that will probably be at the end of our term before, you know, we've got a year and a half in council and that will, that's, will never come to fruition. So I'd like to get this thing, the recommendation as, I'm not sure again, who rec, who's, who's first thing this, but uh, I'd like to get the recommendation as outlined here in the uh, the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have the first and second on this motion?
I have it moved by Casey Owens and seconded by Lad Shaba. So councillor Owen, would you like anything added based on Mr. or councillor Shaba's recommendations or just start with uh, what you had originally proposed?
No, I'd like to keep it simple, but I think uh, Rob, his picture came out. I think he might have something to add here before, before I do any recommendation on my motion.
Oh, thank you.
But I think he might be frozen.
Go ahead, Rob. You can talk now. Oh, we lost him.
You scared him. So while he comes back, if we can, I don't want to, like councillor Ivanoff said, I'm not diluting this. I don't think it's time right now to do that. We need to focus on one thing. We need to focus on the tenant landlord relationship right now. How do we get this thing resolved? So if we can just maybe take out the divest part and use some friendlier language or some less scary words.
So through you acting mayor, uh, White to council, uh, Ms. Sackright and I did discuss and had a backup motion, uh, but I have further put up, put together something here on the spot. So I'll just read what I put together and uh, see what you think. Um, so I have, be it resolved, that report number twenty twenty-one dash CS dash zero zero seven entitled Service Delivery Review Museum of Northern History be received. That staff be directed to write a formal letter to the Ontario Heritage Trust, formerly known as the Ontario Heritage Foundation, to discuss options for possible divestment of the property and any other options for negotiating amendments to the lease surrounding maintenance responsibility.
Yeah, I'm not too scared by that, but.
That, or I can read another one we had as a backup. That is the meat of it would say that staff be directed to write a formal letter to the Ontario Heritage Trust, formerly known as the Ontario Heritage Foundation, to negotiate new terms of a lease agreement, ensuring that OHT covers all future capital expenditures required to maintain and preserve the property.
Yeah, I think I like that one better. That's, I, I don't know. What do you guys think? And I see Rob's back right now, so I don't know if we want to ask him the question he had or.
Yes, the chair recognized uh, Fire Chief Rob Adair if he wishes to speak.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to council, I checked, there's only two outstanding issues from the and they're both very minor.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so clerk, if we can go, I feel more comfortable with the second one you wrote, that um, negotiation of new terms lease agreement. I think that might be something we can work off or start or work there and see what happens.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I believe uh, Director Sackright had a comment she wanted to make. She put her hand up briefly, but I, I, the only reason I brought it up is because I was afraid Stacy did, uh, Acting Mayor White didn't see it. So I didn't mean to put you on, on the spot.
Thank you, councillor Owen and Acting Mayor White. My, my only comment was something that else that has come up, brought to our attention prior to you um, approving the motion or voting on the motion. There has been some requests for release of the final copy of the Service Delivery Review. And that is a property of council and just wondering if there's any discussion about whether you would like that released to the public or if you would like that kept as a confidential document for council's review.
Uh, so I'm going to recognize myself. Um, to my knowledge, there was nothing in that report that was a contract and any uh, legal issues, anything, um, anything that would be considered detrimental uh, financially to uh, the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake if it was released, correct? Then I would have no problem. Uh, councillor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I think we should wait just, just so we can all have a look at it again, because I don't remember it all. And I just want to say yes, and then I, I, you know what, I, I'd like to have a, just review it in my mind, just to be comfortable. I, you're, it's probably fine as uh, uh, Acting Mayor White suggests, but I just want to make sure that it's fine. If you don't mind, and I, I still have a uh, a concern that we're going to be too soft with the Ontario Heritage Trust people and we're going to end up with a negotiation that's going to last forever. Uh, anyway, that's just my opinion, so. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams.
Yeah, I'm in uh, full support of better wording. I think there was a few individuals that took some uh, scary words that were in the original motion and ran with myth truths and misinformation. It was able to stir up quite the uh, community support for something that we just want to do is have a conversation to help relieve the tax burden on the residents. If you had watched, if for any members of the public that are watching right now, watch the capital budget, there is a lot of pressures facing the tax levy that we need to fund, to keep our water going, to keep the roads maintained. And we just need to look at all options that are on the table so that we can keep this community being the best that it can be. So yes, this is a motion to have a conversation with uh, the Ontario Trust so that we can find ways to not have this poor relationship of being a tenant that has to pay for all the improvements. That doesn't go, that doesn't work normally. So I'm in favor of this.
Any further comments or questions? Do we feel that Madam Clerk should read the motion for a second time?
And councillor Owens, as the mover, uh, just from all of that again, or would you like to vote on the original recommend, recommended one on the report or the uh, third one that you lean toward?
I feel the third one would I think the third one would, would get the, the message across Ontario Heritage Fund or Trust, but I'm okay with either or. Actually, no, we'll go with the third. We'll start there.
Okay, so we'll put it to a vote of this one, which is moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved, that report number twenty twenty-one dash CS dash zero zero seven entitled Service Delivery Review Museum of Northern History be received. That staff be directed to write a formal letter to the Ontario Heritage Trust, formerly known as the Ontario Heritage Foundation, to negotiate new terms of a lease agreement, ensuring that OHT covers all future capital expenditures required to maintain and preserve the property.
Okay, all in favor? Carried? Okay, next item, seven point four, Team Northern Throttle Drag Race's summer airport use request will pause Director of Economic Development.
Thank you through you, your, uh, your worship. On March sixteenth, we received a letter. There were two items that were um, highlighted. Uh, TNT is seeking approval for the June twenty-three to twenty-eight uh, event at the airport as well as um, an August six to eight event uh, subsequent to that. I should note that council did previously approve the June event at its December meeting of council. Recommendations that are put forward are based on an assumption. And the assumption is that council as normally would, wishes to hire, uh, sorry, wishes to honor um, any commitments that it had made to a, a user group. And uh, second assumption is of course that council wishes to support local initiatives and groups. Therefore, the recommendation as put forward to council is to reaffirm the commitment on uh, for the June event as well as to approve the August one. There are, uh, caveats have been added to the um, recommendations, recognizing the challenges that are posed by the pandemic and uh, concerns over public health and safety. Therefore, we've inserted wording in the resolutions to approve in principle pending pandemic restrictions and to commit to advise uh, of a cancellation or any changes at least fourteen days in advance to try to honor the um, the work that the group does. The, it, it is recognized that the pandemic, of course, does uh, present a, a, a unique challenge. And for that reason, we have put forward uh, alternative uh, recommendations for council's consideration. The first one is that there would be no June event, uh, given just the state of affairs currently. And uh, no August event because in, again, assuming that vaccinations will not conclude until into September. This is of course the most restrictive alternative. Number two would be that cancel the June event, again, on the assumption of uh, problems continuing with the pandemic and approve in principle the August event. Now that puts a lot of pressure on TNT as a community group. They have lost their opportunities to create revenue uh, over the past year. They have been hit hard as, as anybody else. Uh, towards this, suggesting that perhaps uh, council would direct staff to look at the community grant that was established. Um, and I, I recognize that it has not been renewed in the twenty twenty-one operating budget. However, to look at the community grant and uh, consider whether or not that can be used to offset some costs for the August event. That I have to caution again, like I said, I don't know that uh, it will be passed in the twenty twenty-one budget. And it also uh, within the wording of the community grant, it might require some word smithing and some special dispensation by council, but I'm putting it forward as something to consider.
Thank you for that. Um, the only um, issue that I have with this is that last portion of the motion that states that any changes uh, caused by COVID nineteen pandemic to be communicated to Team Northern Throttle under a minimum of fourteen days in advance. We've all watched uh, the premier announce drastic changes within twenty-four to forty-eight hours of the color coding system that will lock us down entirely. Um, so how can we write into a motion that we will give fourteen days notice when the premier himself is, is not giving that to municipalities?
In one way, you do have the premier to blame. Okay, he will make his changes as he's going along. You're, as council, you are um, responding to what you perceive will be the best interest of the community. And no, there is no, you could say fifteen days, you could say thirty days, you could say two days, you would still be wrong. What would it take for them to hopefully uh, mitigate whatever kind of commitments they'd made? I, I would hope that they are also going forward to any kind of suppliers, any kind of vendors, any kind of participants and saying you have to watch the situation as well. It's not a, a recommendation to make easily because you're still putting this group on, on tender hooks. But it does recognize the fact that council does uh, have to take into account uh, community safety and wellbeing as well. It's a fine line. It, it, that, that stipulation or recommendation obviously could be removed, but I think that it would open uh, council to the charges of, well, at the last minute, you're going to pull a fast one on me, which is not what you want to do either.
Yes, thank you. And right to left, uh, councillor Ivanoff?
Yeah, no, and I think if the province shuts us down, you know, and it's three days before the event, they're going to be shut down anyway. It's, you know, it doesn't have any effect on us. Uh, we can't, as councillors, override the province of Ontario. So if Premier Ford shuts us down, then we're shut down and they'll have to deal with that at that time, so.
Thank you, councillor Adams.
Yep, I'm in favor of the uh, current recommendation based on the uh, any restrictions that are in place. Uh, kudos to them for working with the Health Unit last time. They certainly do their due diligence on this matter to ensure public safety and I would completely support that.
Thank you, councillor Owens.
I want to add a bit more language as to this uh, working with the, the, the Timiskini Health Unit. So in this process, last time when we had to to, to, to balance out the good of the community versus the good of the, the group, uh, we got a lot of flak for the decision we made. And you know what? I'm fine with that. But in communications with uh, the Health Unit on this topic, I received information from the Health Unit. And I'm going to just read a small excerpt of an email I received from the uh, Acting Medical Officer of Health that he can absolutely confirm that the Timiskini Health Unit did not green light the drag that he can absolutely confirm that the Timiskini Health Unit did not green light the drag races. In fact, we strongly recommended to the organization committee that the race not go ahead for different reasons, including one that you mentioned in the email. And specifically asked that they do not use green light terminology. Those are strong words from the Acting Medical Officer of Health. The province doesn't give them the rules right now to, to, to stop these events. It's left on to local councillors or lo, local officials to make this decision. So before I say okay to this, I want, I'd like to see added to the terminology that we received in writing from the Health Unit, that this, that they satisfy all criterias and meet whatever, uh, criteria is set by the Health Unit, the province, and that they are giving them the okay to proceed, or to pursue with this event. Because again, I don't want it on my shoulders, on my consciences, and I mean, right now, the numbers are skyrocketing again in the district, so I have a feeling, well, anyway, we'll, my judgment is on that one, but, uh, things change quickly, and, and I want to make sure that we're covered and that we don't cause enough plugs, or an up in the numbers again.
Thank you. Mr. Haas?
Yes, Counselor Owens, when you read that, it, at the same time, it didn't sound as if the Health Unit was specifically saying, do not proceed. They strongly recommended they do not proceed? Uh, that kind of advocating still leaves council on the hook, and unfortunately, it'll never get off.
Yes, but in the second part of the email, which is unfortunate, the province rules within the framework of the event, this clearly did not forbid it to happen, so i, i, it's, it's a game between the province and the Health, as the whole management of this pandemic, the province says one thing, the Health units are stuck complying it, so, so there's a, there's a whole other conversation that could be had on that aspect of the, the management of the Health Unit, but this is not the time or the place to have it. I just want to make sure that the rules a, and that we are covered, to, to make sure that this does not happen.
I, I think that it, it is very reasonable to ask for a letter. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure if it's my connection or yours. We're on the same street, so I'm thinking there's something wrong with this street.
Ever since you guys moved in, the internet's been bad here, but that's just a coincidence.
You're not, you're not the first one to say that. You're not the first one to say that.
I, I forgot what I was going to say. I, I, I think it is reasonable to say that, as we draw closer to the event, say, within that same four, uh, 14-day period, that TNT does provide evidence in writing of this compliance with all the THU rules, as well as a statement from the THU, go or no go. I, I don't know if the THU would be willing to provide that, because it's putting them on the spot, but it doesn't hurt to ask. It still will come down to council's decision, no matter what the premier says, no matter what the THU says. But you're right, they're, they're calling the shots on these kind of gatherings, so.
Thank you, Counselor Owen.
Yeah, um, when I sat through discussions about this for the snowdrags, I la, I, I felt that, you know, the THU had given them permission. That was the impression I was left with. I have read the communication that Casey just read, and it certainly read different than the impression that I've, when I was chairing that council meeting. As for the 14-day notice, I have a real problem with that. As Acting Mayor White said, all you have to do is go back to last weekend when the rules changed every five minutes, it seemed. To me, this is very clear English, what it states. And we can't make that commitment because we don't know what's happening tomorrow's in terms of the rules. I can understand why the group wants that commitment, but I don't see that we can make that commitment because we don't know what the numbers are tomorrow. We don't know what the rules are next week. We can't give 14 days' notice, and if we leave that in there, then I want a legal opinion on what the consequences of leaving that in and then having to cancel the event. Because to me, that's quite clear what it says. There's no, no interpretation. Says we have to give them 14 days' notice, they make any changes. Well, it's a pandemic. We can't make that commitment. As far as them holding the event, as long as the Health Unit approves, and I agree with Kate, uh, Counselor Owens' recommendation, or I believe it was from Counselor Owen, that we get it in writing from the Health Unit, um, a letter saying that they are meeting all the current regulations, rules, and whatever. Because I, I don't, the communications that Casey got and what I heard in the council chamber seem to be quite different, so I would like to see a condition put in there that they get the letter from the Health Unit, and I definitely want that 14 days taken out. If it's not taken out, I want a legal opinion on what that does to the town, to the corporation.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? Uh, Madam Clerk, can, can we know who the first and secondary is on this, please?
Counselor Ivanoff is the mover, and Counselor Owen is the seconder. Um, Counselor Ivanoff, are you agreeable to take out the 14-day section and add in that TNT provided writing their approvals from THU for each event?
If that moves this along, sure. You know what, it's, I don't see necessary, but if it moves it along, yep.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say anyways, yeah.
Acting Mayor White, would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be resolved that report number 2020 dash dev dash zero one five, entitled Team Northern Throttle Drag Races Summer Airport Use Request be received. That staff be directed to finalize arrangements with Team Northern Throttle for the use of the Kirkland Lake Airport to host drag races for June 23rd to June 28th, 2021 inclusive, pending any pandemic, pandemic restrictions as per council resolution dated December 1st, 2020. That council approve in principle pending any pandemic restrictions. Team Northern Throttle requests for the use of the Kirkland Lake Airport to host for drag races for August 4th to 9th, 2021 inclusive. And that TNT provide in writing their approvals from the Health Unit for each event.
All in favor? Passed, thank you. Item 7.5, Golden Corridor Snow Drifters Frog's Breath application, again, Wilfrid Haas, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Uh, we frequently, uh, have community groups that are applying for funding, and they do require, uh, a char, not a charitable number, um, because we don't actually have one as a municipality. We have a business number, but we recognize that it's charity. So they often approach the municipality, can you be a cosponsor for the application? That would allow the process to be, to, to proceed. What happens then is that the funding is received by the municipality, and, uh, uh, it is, uh, then passed on, sorry, through to the group. Golden Corridor Snow Drifters have come forward with such an application, and they are asking that the town be a cosponsor, and the application itself would be for about $5,500 to purchase equipment, storage containers, or raw materials to fix bridges or local trails.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, fully support that. I think us giving them a little helping hand by providing a business number is a great idea. Thank you.
Absolutely, and this isn't the first time that we've, this council has approved Frog's Breath, so it's finally something that we can kind of easily push through because we're familiar with it, so, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, can we have the motion?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be resolved that report number 2021 dash dev dash zero one four, entitled Golden Corridor Snow Drifters Frog's Breath Application be received. That council approved the request from the Golden Corridor Snow Drifters to co-sponsor an application to the Frog's Breath Foundation for a grant to purchase a storage container and purchase material to repair trail bridges, and that staff be directed to receive any funds granted by the Frog's Breath Foundation, issue a charitable receipt to Frog's Breath Foundation, and forward a donation of the same value to the Golden Corridor, Corridor Snow Drifters.
All in favor? Carried, thank you very much. Moving on, item 7.6, 2021 Conference Attendance, Megan Allen Elliott, Madam Clerk.
Acting Mayor White, through you, the council, I'm coming to you today to get your confirmation of who would like to attend the Phenom conference, as well as the AMO conference. They are both virtual. Phenom has no cost associated with it, and AMO has a cost associated with it of $600 as an early bird registration, as long as we register before April 30th. Uh, so the mayor had noted that he was discussing this with you, but I didn't have final, um, direction on who was wanting to go to each, so I'm just hoping that we can, uh, settle on which council would like to be registered for which conference.
So just before we get ahead of ourselves here, we do have dates of April 30th for questions to be submitted. I can't say normally, but the last time when we went to AMO, it was staff that wrote reports. So I'm interested to know through Acting CEO Don Stedholm, if he believes that we can have relative questions prepared for, uh, April 30th.
I know you're looking for me from an answer called yes.
Well, an honest answer would be great, so we could be prepared.
That's the answer I'm going to give you. Yes, we can.
Thank you, sir. Okay, please continue with the conversation, council members. Is there anyone willing to go to these virtual, so, in your living room, conferences?
And Acting Mayor White, I should just note that that's just for the Phenom one. They haven't, they haven't said anything about AMO, so you'll have a lot more time for, for AMO.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so any, yes, thank you, Counselor Owen.
Yeah, um, it's not that I really want to go to Phenom, but I think we should be represented there, and, um, there's no cost to that one. Um, I, I don't like virtual things, but that's the way it is, so I, I would go to the Phenom one if, if, if no, no other council member wants to go, because I think we should be represented. And hopefully Don comes up with questions or whatever. I know our Acting CAO will do his end.
Um, as for AMO, is there anyone, this is, I can really advocate for AMO, probably, including Counselor Ivanoff as well. This is the town's opportunity to speak directly to the ministers, and they put together, staff put together just a phenomenal package for us, and made Kirkland Lake look beyond this council. I just, I have to say, it was just phenomenal what they did for us through AMO. And if we want to lobby higher levels of government, AMO is the way to do it, I feel. So if nobody else is willing to go or to attend virtually, I would like to go again on behalf of the town. Yes, Patrick Adams?
I think you're a great choice to do that. Unfortunately, I go to, I can't, I can't take holidays to, to do that, and, uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Absolutely, Counselor Owen.
Yes, if Acting Mayor White's going to go, I'll have somebody hold my hand and keep me under control, so, uh.
Oh, don't put that on me.
No, oh, sorry. No, in all seriousness.
Keep you under control.
In all seriousness, I, again, I don't like, I don't like virtual things. I've never done one like that. But it's important. I think we have strong representation there, and, and so if, uh, if there's not a second person that, that wants to attend that conference, I will attend it. If there's somebody that has a, really wants to be there, I will step down and let them go.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, so we have two takers. I don't know if Mayor Pat Kylie had voiced his opinion on it, but I do believe strongly that the mayor should be involved as well. If he can.
The mayor on this list for attendance on both, and we can, we'll figure out logistics as well. Maybe in August, we can do the same thing of, you know, we can set it up here and have you in council chambers, and so, we'll see by then.
Awesome, perfect. So do we have a motion on that one as well? We do?
Yes. I'm just wondering, so I have it moved by Lad Shaba. Are you comfortable with the way that reads that the mayor is responsible to submit the questions for Phenom, or would you like that to just say staff be directed?
Uh, there's staff to be directed, but with input from the mayor, how's that?
Yep.
I don't want to, I don't want to leave him out of the equation, that they work together.
So we have a move by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owens. Be resolved that memorandum number 2021 dash CLK dash zero zero nine M, entitled 2021 Conference Attendance be received. That staff be directed to register Pat Kylie, Rick Owen, or and Rick Owen to attend Phenom virtually. That staff be directed to register Pat Kylie, Stacy White, and Rick Owen to attend AMO virtually, and budget the appropriate registration cost. And that staff be directed with input from the mayor to submit any questions to the Minister Forum for Phenom by April 30th, and communicate with council further information received about AMO delegation.
All in favor? Carried, excellent. So at this point, I actually have to step down from chairing the meeting, because I have a motion coming forward. So Counselor Patrick Adams will now take over as Acting, Acting Mayor. So thank you, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity to be acting, acting. So here we go. Uh, agenda. We have conference?
I'm under number eight, Consideration of Notices of Motion.
Consideration of Notices of Motion, number eight. Go ahead.
So thank you very much, sir. At our last meeting, I did put a note to some motion that I would be bringing this forward to this meeting. Madam Clerk, do you read the motion, or do I? Sorry.
So, uh, we could, I could read it if you'd like, and just a reminder, so what we do is Counselor White has moved it forward, and we have to see if there's a seconder to support it to move forward. So if there's anyone that would like to second, this is the motion put forward. Be resolved that staff be directed to bring back a report within the next 30 days, which detail the following items in preparation of budget process 2021. The total number of properties intact and separately water payment arrears. The total number of properties without a single payment in 2020 as above. The total monetary value of non-collected taxes slash water payments on said properties. How said amount is dealt with in both the budgeting process and government reporting standards, and any current policy developed for collection of the linked win account.
So do I have a second support?
I will.
Very good. We have Counselor Shaba. So, all in favor? Any questions?
The debates.
Any questions on this? Can't see your hand, Mr. Shaba.
I'm not raising my hand. That's why you can't see it.
Oh, because I can't see you.
Oh, my bar is running low, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, that's sad.
All in favor?
Yep.
Do we need a medic for that, or?
Oh, you need one of these.
That will do it.
So thank you, Acting, Acting Mayor, Counselor Adams. Now I will go back to the chair.
Yeah.
Fine job, yeah. So item number nine is introduction reading and consideration of bylaws. And none noted. Number 10, questions from council to staff, none noted. Those are in general written ahead of time. Number 11 is a notice of motion. None noted. Last one is councillor reports. Last one is councillor reports. Does anybody have, yeah, Lad Shaba, please go ahead.
Good, this is in order, but uh I just want to express uh my appreciation to Michelle, uh, I know he's moving on, I've never really met him face to face, but I've been very impressed with uh his reports and uh I thank you very much, and I wish him uh well, I don't know if he's still on the line, but we can pass that on, that's all.
Thank you, councillor Adams.
Yes, I actually did have a notice of motion, I apologize.
I am so sorry.
I'm just so excited to get out of this four hour meeting.
Aren't we all, okay, so can can we go back a little bit, sorry, notice of motion?
Yep, uh, so certainly what I would like to present uh at the next meeting is something that uh has come up through the letters, about how important it is to uh have tourism into our area. And certainly through that budget process that we just saw, it's pretty difficult to get that funding available, and certainly from ratepayers who don't want their tax tax dollars taken from them for those purposes. So for this, I'd like to motion that staff be directed to continue the process of implementing the municipal accommodation tax, and that a report is brought back at the next scheduled meeting of council, providing a timeline on its progress. This way, we can have other out of town residents help us fund these needs of tourism for our community. And that's for the next meeting.
Yes, thank you councillor Adam, so it will be recorded. Okay, we can continue on with councillors' reports, I believe councillor Owen had his hand up, and there it is.
Yes, um, I I became aware yesterday that this is Volunteers Week. And there's a a very important role that volunteers play in the operation of the town. And it's something that I don't think a lot of people are really aware of. Um, we have a number of committees and boards. And I'm sure a lot of people say, oh yeah, there's a board for the library and there's a board for the museum, yeah, okay, those two have a a little higher profile. But committee of adjustment, um, planning committee, tech pioneer, management committee, um police services board. These, these are are uh committees that attract local people who give freely of their time and have real input into the recommendations that these committees make back to council. And I I know they get recognized in the town recognition program, but I don't think the average resident really realizes how important these volunteers are to the operation of the town. And um I've been very impressed, I I sit on I don't know how many committees, and I'm not going to count or else I'll resign from some, but I've been really impressed with the volunteering, the 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 quality of the volunteers and the dedication they show. And I just want to uh express my gratitude to the people that do volunteer, because they have to make difficult decisions, just like council. The only difference is they come as recommendations to council, it's not the end, we can turn them down, but um, any community runs on volunteers, but I don't think a lot of people realize how much the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake uh relies on volunteers, and I just want to express my gratitude to them, thank you.
Bad councillor Owen, thank you, any other council reports? Um, I do have to personally thank Wilfred Haas, he uh definitely helped me out today, I was asked to speak with a panel for Agoma University regarding the opportunity to um expand university programming uh with Northern College. And I reached out to to Wilf this morning, and he got back to me, and he just made Kirkland Lake and myself sound amazing, so uh, it's just amazing that staff will help you in a pinch, and I personally thank him so much for that, and hopefully we'll keep our fingers crossed, and maybe Kirkland Lake campus will also be expanding in the future, so thank you very much, Wilfred Haas. No other comments? Okay, additional information, thirteen point one, support for universal paid sick days in Ontario. I believe councillor Adam had this one.
Yep, this is something that uh should be a given, this was in support of the municipality that supported this. Uh, our professional doctors out there are advocating this. How can people take time off work when they won't get paid to do so, which puts more people at risk with COVID? So I support this motion, and uh hopefully other members of my team can support it as well.
Absolutely, I second councillor Owen.
Yeah, I uh, I definitely support this, I have a son that works in a low wage, high risk job in southern Ontario. Uh, lives in a communal or whatever you call it, basically a modern boarding house type situation, so he's in contact with a lot of people there. And quite frankly, he wouldn't be able to take time off if he wasn't feeling well, through no fault of his own. And uh, I I think this is is a given that this should happen to 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 help slow the spread of the illness and to protect people so they can pay their rent at the end of the month and put food on the tables. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, do we have a first and a second on this?
Yes, um, acting mayor, before I go to there, can we quickly just pass a motion to receive the verbal updates from council?
Oh, sorry, I did skip that, thank you so much. Go ahead.
The Ivanov, seconded by Rick Owen, be resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be
All in favor? So moved.
And then.
Guess that five hour, four hour meeting is getting to us all.
Support of universal paid sick days, I have it moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be resolved that motions of support for universal sick days be received, that the town of Kirkland Lake endorses legislative sick days and calls on the Government of Ontario to permanently legislate universal paid sick days for all workers in Ontario during the pandemic and beyond, regardless of workplace size, type of work, or immigration status. And that staff be directed to forward this motion to the Premier of Ontario, Minister of Labor, and surrounding Ontario municipalities.
All in favor? So carried. Item thirteen point two, support for reform of joint and several liability. Madam Clerk, can you just read the motion?
Sure, so this was originally brought forth uh by acting mayor White, but as she is the acting mayor, I have put the mover to the Patrick Adams. So I have Patrick Adams, move to Patrick Adams, seconded by Rick Owen. Resolve that the motion of support for reform of joint and several liability be received. That the town of Kirkland Lake supports the municipality of Tweed in their call for reform and reconsideration of the negligence act RSO nineteen ninety. And that staff be directed to forward this motion to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing and Surrounding Ontario Municipalities.
Any comments, questions? All in favor? Carried, thank you. And at this time, number fourteen, move into closed session.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owen, be resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section two thirty nine two to discuss two matters involving personal matters of identifiable individuals and one matter that contains advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege.
All in favor? So carried. Thank you, item number fifteen, matters from closed session.
We have a motion moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that the following committee appointments be in effect. Raymond Millet, Committee of Adjustment and Planning Advisory Committee. Donna LaGros, Committee of Management TPR. Athena LaCarte, Property Standards Committee.
All in favor?
Yep.
Carried. And the confirmation bylaw, item number sixteen.
Moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time, numbers passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be effective there too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero three one being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held April twentieth, twenty twenty one.
All in favor?
Yep.
Carried, and adjournment.
Adam, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that council adjourn the April twentieth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of council.
All in favor?
Yes.
Excellent.
Still smiling.